Calling the meeting to order. This is continuation of PZ 1908. ZC Noang Shipyard, Inc. First thing I'll announce, the exits are two in the rear and two in the front in case we need to use them.
It's really hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. How's it now? We're going to continue the hearing we left off a few weeks ago. We're on the people who are opposed to this application. So what I would do is if we're going to try to keep it, if possible, two minutes each because we have about 40 people to speak. And we have to get through this tonight because the time is expiring on the application. And we want to close at 11:00. We will not be making a decision tonight. We've got so much material given to us, we're going to have to read that and go over it and review it. So there will be no decision made at the close of the public hearing. Any other announcements? I don't think. Tonight also, we have our town attorney. Jeff Longdon has joined us in case we need any legal advice. So I'm going to call 10 at a time. If you're here, you can come down to either mic and just first one comes first served on that one.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you've modified the order of this public hearing delaying comments of staff and also questions to the applicant by commissioners until after the public has spoken. This order deprives the public of the ability to comment on the complete record of this hearing. I have consulted with two other former chairman.
I can't hear you back.
I've consulted with two other former chairman of the commission, and we all urge you to correct this error before proceeding any further.
What's the error?
The order, Mr. Chairman. We have not heard from staff, and we have not heard any questions from the commission.
The commission will ask their questions during the rebuttal.
Okay?
Also, one more point. Also, since the last hearing on this application, the Director of Planning has made statements in the press that could be seen as prejudicial against the opposition to this application. For this reason, he should refrain from any further participation in this hearing. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
Mr. Chairman, I have to ask to be heard on that point.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the planning staff's involvement with this application is not subject to the same ex parte or disqualification rules as it applies to members of this commission. Your staff is a point of contact for the general public, for the applicant, for opponents and proponents. And I do not think that any of your staff members have acted in any inappropriate manner, and they should be allowed to participate. It's a very different standard as it applies to you as commission members. Staff is the one point of contact that can speak publicly about the project and not violate ex parte rules. So I don't believe any of your staff have to stand down or disqualify themselves from this hearing. Thank you.
Town attorney agrees. So any other questions at this time before we get going? I have trouble reading people's signatures, so if I mess it up, it's the way you wrote your name. Jessica Morrissey, Kathleen Oakley, David Snyder, Richard Dixon, Jim Friedlander, Kathy Weinberger, Fred Allard, Matt Ferry, I think his name is, 42 Holmes Street, and Dan Sims of 30 Borough Street. Would you please state your name and address when you talk?
I'm Jessica Morrissey, and I have asked Laura Graham to be my mouthpiece. I just had an operation two weeks ago, and I can't speak well. So Laura Graham.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
No.
Yes? Okay. These are my own words, not Jessica's, but I thank her for giving me her slot and the opportunity to speak tonight to this commission. In response to the argument that we as a town shouldn't be afraid of change, I would like to quote my grandfather. "Just because you have an idea doesn't necessarily mean it is a good idea." Smiler's Wharf is a bad idea. These developers have dreamed up an 800-pound gorilla that they want to squat in a quiet residential neighborhood on the water's edge. Meg Lyons is a thoughtful architect, but hiring her to put lipstick on this gorilla doesn't change what it is. Many in this town think their property taxes are too high, but building Smiler's Wharf is not going to lower our taxes. Smiler's Wharf will increase the traffic and intensify the parking problem in downtown Mystic. Smiler's Wharf will put undue strain on our local sewage system. Smiler's Wharf will change the scale of Mystic in a way more befitting New London. We are not against all development. Think of the Nature Center's Coogan Farm and the new Sift Bakery in Mystic. These are additions that enhance and enrich our town. They do not damage and leach off of our town's reputation. A European travel agent told me that his clients want to go to three places in northeast of the United States. New York City, Niagara Falls, and Mystic, Connecticut. Not Newport, not Watch Hill, not Old Saybrook. These are all nice vacation places, but when it comes time to choose, tourists want our maritime history and our small-town charm. Hundreds of us who are not paid are pushing back against this proposal because one investor should not be allowed to damage what is the cultural and economic well-being of our whole town. Zoning is a promise. When families invest their life savings into a home, they count on the town's officials to protect them. Except for a few outliers, most people in this auditorium would not want a 74-foot building and a 200-seat restaurant and the ensuing chaos to be constructed next to their primary residence. Zoning is a promise. I humbly ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to honor themselves and this town by holding fast to the original M.C. 80 zoning. Please do not let these developers' bad idea ruin our town. Thank you.
I'm Karen Oakley from 24 Jackson Avenue. And first of all, I want to say that I'm really proud to live in a community where people raise their voices to preserve their village way of life. And what I'm most concerned about is the water, and that's the perspective that I'm going to speak about. The water surrounds this proposed building site on three sides. It comes all the way around, right behind Danielle Duke's dermatology office. That's almost an island. I live on the side, the east side of the cove, that was labeled on the site map as being healthy and non-degraded. There is an area back there that has not been messed around with by human interference, and I'm worried that it's going to be destroyed and there will be huge loss of habitat in our environment. I want to protect it. Why wouldn't I? The water flows into this shallow cove on the east side. The tidal wetlands here are a really important part of the ecosystem. And for those of you who don't understand how the tidal wetlands help us, I'm going to explain it. They purify, they filter. As the water comes in over the salt marsh, it picks up all the dead and decaying salt grass that's died from last year, and it washes it back out into the water, and it starts the beginning of the food chain. All the little minnows and all the little shrimp and the small creatures start feeding on this degrading grass, which is highly nutritious, and the larger shore birds and the shellfish and the other animals follow. It's a very sensitive system. This cove is essentially a grocery store for many of the waiting shorebirds and shellfish. The night-crown herons that have nested in that group of trees on the east side have had a chick every year. Last year, they had two chicks that they raised to maturity. There are so few areas like this left for them to have a habitat in. The water. The water will receive glyphosate when they spray an herbicide to control the fragmity. I'm not talking about a couple pumps on a pump jar. I'm talking about a serious fire hose spraying herbicide two times a year for several years to make the fragmities die. That's what it's going to take. This is tough stuff. How is this not going to find its way into our water system? Don't we have an aquaculture here? Don't we have people raising oysters? Isn't that part of our local economy? The water in the cove is positively affected by the existing living shoreline. They want to replace it with a manicured townhouse appropriate.
Ma'am, I asked for two minutes. We've gone five.
It's a sanctuary of trees, vines, honeysuckle, roses, and yeah, there's some invasive species, but the animals don't mind those. The developers have described additional approaches to protect the environment and toxic runoff, but this spraying is an example of how the actions documented in their plan have the potential to negatively impact the water and the surrounding marsh. The water has found its way across Washington Street in high-tide floods, and the street has to be blocked off several times a year because the floodwaters prevent people from leaving town in that side. The water also flows past our two sewer plants, which are not functioning well. I can tell you because I lived next door to one, and I made eight --
Excuse me.
At least five odor complaints last year.
Your time is expired. Thank you.
I'm going to wrap up right now. Whatever happens on this site, let's make sure that this celebrates the best that we already have with our marine systems and our environment. In this town that we live in, in Mystic, healthy water is vital to our quality of life.
Thank you. You know, we're going to get through things tonight. We're going to have to move along, and I'm sorry to cut people short, but we've got about 50 more people that want to speak. Pardon?
It's a public hearing.
I know it's a public hearing. Listen, we're going through eight hours of this, and we'll stay here till 11:00. We'll stay here till 11:00. We can't. We have a timeframe on the application.
You're going to sue a lawsuit on that?
So if someone, I'd like everyone to be able to speak. If someone has said just what you'd like to say, just please say you agree with it and make it a little shorter so we can move along. Thank you. Jim?
Okay. I'm Jim Friedlander, and I agree with most of what's been said here, but maybe I have a little bit of different perspective in that I've lived in Mystic almost my whole life. My parents moved here when I was two. And I remember Mystic when it was a town where people lived in neighborhoods and walked downtown to buy most of their, most of what they needed before the changes happened in probably 60s and 70s, when the big box stores moved in and set up business outside of town and kind of left Mystic as, with a lot of vacancies, let's say. So I've seen a lot of changes, but one thing that's remained, and one thing that I think most of us really appreciate about Mystic is that it does have still some of the really nice neighborhoods, and you still can walk. I think people live there because they enjoy the neighborhoods and they enjoy the ability to walk downtown and take part in what's going on there. And I see this as more giving Mystic up to the tourists. It's been a slow process, but more and more, we can see that the local people lose out and the tourists win out, and this is just going to be another nail in that coffin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Weinberger, and I live on Lantern Hill Road, Mystic. And I chose to move to Mystic in the early 70s. I moved here from California, and I chose Mystic because I liked the small-town feeling of the place. I didn't choose to move to Newport or any of these fancy places because I liked the informal feel in Mystic, and I think it would be a shame to see this development go in with the high rises and all the, everything that goes with it, including traffic and the environmental impacts that others have spoken about. So I just wanted to let you know that I am opposed to it for these reasons. I like the small-town feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a law office at 15 Holmes Street. And, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you so that the public will have the opportunity to express their views, that you ask the applicant to extend the hearing by permission so you can then be sure everybody gets their chance to speak. Mr. Sweeney, would you be willing to do that? Apparently, Mr. Sweeney is not willing to do that, so therefore, I think we know where we stand in terms of the cooperation from the developers right off the bat. Now, Mr. Chairman, I gave you a letter the last time we were here. I'm not going to repeat my letter, but I want to emphasize, this is your time. This is the time that you have the legislative authority to decide what is best for your community. It's not unfettered. You have to follow the comprehensive plan. You have to follow the plan of conservation and development, so you can't just do what you want. But you do have, once you have changed the zone to the floating zone, and by the way, I worked with Jason when the Mystic Seaport first put the floating zone in, and we worked together very cooperatively as a community at that time, so I do have some understanding of that. But once you have put it in and the master plan has been presented and approved, you limit it to administrative function. That means you don't have independent discretion, and that term independent discretion is from a case. I'm not going to give you the citations, but you lose your opportunity. You've got to make sure you get it right this time. It's very important. Now, moving on to some of the other issues, I have a couple of things I want to present to you, but I'm going to put this, just a photograph I took on Friday out my front door. I have never seen traffic. I'll give you a copy. I've never seen traffic backed up so much as it was on Friday, except for the weekend that we have the art festival. This is something that's getting worse and worse, and I don't think it takes an expert to know that their expertise was saying something that just doesn't fly. You, as in your legislative capacity, have the right to use your own good judgment, your own knowledge of the area. You don't have to rely on the experts. When you get to the point of the site plans and the later ones, yeah, they become more important. Then your decisions would become arbitrary. Now you have the right to make the decision, so don't squander that. But again, I want to put this in just because it happened on Friday. Clients couldn't get to my office. The first time since I've been there that we've had a problem with that. Second thing I want to talk about is earlier, last time, a number of people from Mystic Chamber spoke up and said the Mystic Chamber was behind it. I don't know that there's ever been a vote of the board on this, but I know not all the members. I'm a member. I'm not in favor of it. It's too big. One of the first, I'm in favor of tourism, by the way. I think our town is something we need to share. When I go visit other places, I am very happy to be able to share nice places with them. When I get stuck in bridge traffic, I turn a switch and become a tourist for a moment, and it's nice to relax that way. So I'm not opposed to the issues of tourism, but we need to do it in an appropriate way. And until we fix the traffic problems and transportation problems, we should not have development of this scale. It's much too big. 200-seat restaurant, it isn't going to work. And again, your own judgment is what counts here. Not all of the experts, not what I say, but what you believe based on the public input. Flooding. I had 18 inches of stormwater in my office in Sandy and 12 inches in the storm before that. If they build up more of the hard structure south of me, that water has to go somewhere. I'm going to have two feet in my office next time. So their attempts to mitigate for that property is going to cause problems further up the river. Are you prepared as a town for the expense to harden all the way up? Or maybe put in floodgates like they have in Providence or New Bedford? These are things that you're going to have to consider. Public safety. I went through water up to my thighs to be able to take the sandbags away from my building to let the water out. That same amount of water was on Cottrell Street. The same amount was in where the proposal is. It's unsafe. You're not going to be able to get the fire departments in to take care of it. The public safety people will be putting themselves at risk. If it's a business that's operated there, if it's a marine business, fine. Now, segueing very quickly into coastal management, water-dependent uses, that's what your plan of development says. Now, my old friend Jane Stahl, who I was in law school with and had helped us very much in Groton, probably the first time mitigation was actually forced on a developer. And ironically, it happened to be the lot right across from Noang Shipyard, which the Holsteins now own. And the developer graciously, with a little pressure from DEP and Jane Stahl and a letter from Art Rock that came just in the nick of time, he gave up one lot for a public park. That's mitigation. Prior to that, it was just being used as a parking lot. Here, we have an active boatyard. We have a boatyard that could be a well-operating boatyard. When the Holsteins bought it in 2005, what have they done? And now they're saying, oh, the buildings are worn down? It's demolition by neglect. This is not something that the public should sanction. Now, on that same point, and so I can sit down very quickly, I'm going to also submit the article that David Collins wrote recently from The Day because I think he goes into a lot of very specific things. It's an opinion piece, but so is what I'm saying. His opinion is certainly valid, and I want to make sure that's part of the record, as well as, as I said, my photograph. And just to sort of clarify the point, this is a Soundings article in 2005 about the time that the Holsteins took over the property. So those are important factors.
Thank you.
So with that, thank you very much for your time.
Yep, go ahead.
Hi. My name is Daniel Sims. I live at 30 Borough Street in Mystic. I have been a Mystic resident for 13 years. The Seaport Marine is a commercial boatyard, and it's true that commercial boatyard work is diminishing. Harry Fornson has a plan. According to him, it goes to great lengths to blend in and not hurt the character of the neighborhood. A three-story, 200-seat restaurant, a 45-room hotel, 47 residential units, apartments, townhouses, multifamily units, including what will be the tallest building in Mystic. This is nothing like the neighborhood of two-story homes on narrow streets. This does nothing to benefit the neighborhood. The fact that it doesn't benefit the neighborhood disqualifies this plan for rezoning under the Neighborhood Development District regulations. Downtown Mystic has a car problem. There are too many cars and no place to put them. The Smiler's Wharf will bring in more cars, making parking and traffic problems worse. I am not anti-development. I believe this property can be a great asset to the community. My solution? Keep the marina zoning in place. If you have a commercial boatyard with diminishing work, convert it to a recreational marina and maybe add a restaurant or some temporary structures that could be used to service the clients in the summertime, and they could be removed for winter storage of boats. No hotels, no residential housing, and no seven-story apartment building.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Fred Allard from 3 Bay Street in Mystic. Can you hear me okay?
No.
I'm trying to read this and face the mic. I'm going to try to, for the commission's benefit, I'm going to try to read from notes because I have a couple handouts that are, might look intimidating to you. So I'm going to keep one for reference, and I'm going to pass these on to you. I provided an electronic copy to Jason Vincent, and you've got the hard copy right there. I apologize for not having more copies. Is this any better? Okay, so this is a PowerPoint-style briefing that I'm providing to you, and a lot of what's in here in the front end is stuff you've already heard, stuff that I agree with, and I'm not going to repeat it. So I do want to put a fine point on a couple of issues, though, and those areas are, and it's not my only objection, but the areas I'm talking to right now, I'm hoping to help you with your perspective on this, is one is that the removal of a water-dependent boating support facility that arguably in demand is against the coastal management policy. The second issue is that there are, it's already been mentioned, the creation of hazards to life and property by building occupied structures in a floodplain. I'll provide a victorial example of what happened in Sandy in the same floodplain zone that I live in. The third point is, and it's been mentioned by a number of people, but I'm going to provide a perspective on that as well, is the further erosion of the quality of residential life in Mystic Bridge due to increased traffic, and that's both cars and people. Okay? So I'm going to jump to slide six in this presentation, skip all that other stuff, and talk about the, an argument that there is a reasonable demand for boat storage facilities in the Mystic River area. I provided some numbers that are based on what I call the parking spots in the water and the number of boat storage spots that I've counted from satellite views in the marinas in this area. There's a big disparity there. Now, some of these boats that are in the water are taken home. They're on trailers, so not all of these would apply, but there are two and a half times as many water parking spaces as there are land parking spaces. And I provided 11 photos in the next few pages, which the audience can't see, and not all of you can see because you don't have enough copies, but you can see that most of the marinas have their winter storage areas looking like a can of sardines. So I'll skip past that. You've got it for reference, and you'll see that some of these people have really challenged to pack them in like they did. So that I'm hoping this provides a compelling argument for preserving or improving water-dependent use at Seaport Marine, and that there is an obvious, at least to me, and reasonable demand for boating support space in Mystic, and that's consistent with the intention and the policies of the Coastal Management Act of Connecticut, which local zoning authorities are obliged to respect. Does give you latitude, but you're supposed to at least consider it. and the policies of the Coastal Management Act of Connecticut, which local zoning authorities are obliged to respect. Does give you latitude, but you're supposed to at least consider it. The second point about the floodplain is that building occupied structures and garages in a hundred-year floodplain creates hazards to life and property. The Seaport Marine property is about two-hundred, pardon me, two-thousand feet from the nearest higher floodplain. So anybody that gets caught in a storm surge in that area is going to be stuck until the waters recede. Now, a superstorm event like, a superstorm Sandy event, or something like Hurricane Carol, which had equivalent storm surge, would isolate the Seaport Marine property from emergency support services. That could include fire, ambulance, police, et cetera during a storm surge. Now, on page fourteen, I've provided some photographs that showed the storm surge at my house on Bay Street, which is in the same hundred-year, while the front of it is in the same hundred-year floodplain as the Seaport Marine property. At the peak of Sandy, we had thirty-three inches of water over Bay Street. We were stuck there until the waters receded. I've given you a reference with respect to the baseline high tide and also a mid-tide, but I have a map there showing you where I live and where Smilers Wharf is, Seaport Marine, that is, and you can look at the edge of the blue where it meets the white. It's quite a distance that anybody would have to traverse, and there might be wires down, there could be hazards in the water that would dictate that you don't take a chance. So I do want to make a point that a storm surge like we had in Sandy or Hurricane Carol, and there were other hurricanes too way back then, would be a, would create a hazard for the people that live there and probably destroy the cars in their garages. Now, the third point I wanted to talk about was congestion in the streets. Your zoning regulations in the preamble and in the state enabling statutes talk about, you're supposed to have regulations that are designed to lessen congestion in the streets. I'd like to see us hold the line, if nothing else. We've gone overboard with respect, as other people have stated, to the traffic and congestion in Mystic. We've seen commercial parking invade the residential zones, including my street. My house is a thousand feet from the nearest restaurant, and in every weekend, you'll find our street is inundated, completely saturated with people that are using our street to support the restaurants. And some of those are workers, but most of them are customers. So when you have a situation like we have in Bay Street, it's not only the parking that takes away space for the residents and their visitors, it also in our street and other streets, I'm sure, creates a one-lane road. Okay? Now, my concern is emergency vehicle access. I don't want to make this too personal, but we've had a couple of 911 calls. And if you look at the picture on page sixteen, you'll see what happens to Bay Street when you've got parking saturating one side. It's a one-lane road. Now, when the 911 event happens, you've got vehicles coming from both directions. You can just imagine, they might have a hard time getting to Bay Street, let alone getting onto Bay Street. In any case, I have that concern that we are inundating the residential areas with an overflow of commercial parking. Basically, commercial parking is parking for restaurants, stores, or whatever. I also want to make a point about the people and the stuff they carry with them. On page seventeen, I show a picture, it's not a really egregious picture, but of a car parking in such a way as to obstruct the turnout from my driveway. This happens several dozen times in the summer, probably a hundred times. In any case, it makes it difficult to get in and out of your driveway. You also don't see all the people that inundate the residential neighborhoods, and a lot of them have dogs, they like to use your lawn, okay? And one of my concerns is that, if you look at that picture, you'll see my driveway is comprised of pavers. These are dry set. I've had a problem where those pavers have been shifted by people turning in to turn around to get a parking place on the street, to the point where I had to have the whole driveway reset. That was a $5,000 bill. I buttressed the area, so it's less likely to happen in the future. But I do want to make a point that the increased traffic of people as well as cars causes other conflicts with the residential neighborhood. So you've heard my points, and I'm going to try to wrap up with some comments I heard during the past week at my home, and this is the last slide. This is from a lady, I use that in quotes, whom I confronted while she was in my driveway trying to turn around. I'm trying to walk up my driveway, there's a woman there, hasn't decided what she's doing, I don't know. I explained to her I didn't appreciate her being on my private property, and that people like her had caused problems that cost me money. Her response was, quote, "You've got an effin' problem. This is the way it is, and maybe you shouldn't be living here if you don't like it." Okay? It's, I know it's funny, but this is, I'm a fifty-year resident of Bay Street, I never had to put up with this kind of nonsense. Now, within a couple days, there was a couple bicycling, they were right by our house and they're looking at the houses, and by the way, the picture on that page is from the Plan of Conservation and Development, under the Strengthen and Enhance Village Centers category. This is a couple bicycling in Bay Street. Quote, "These houses are pretty nice, but I wouldn't want to live here." Now, my last comment is to read from that section in the P O C D about enhancing the village centers. It mentions, "These villages are and have been highly desirable places." Contrast that with the comments you just heard, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matt Ferrier. I live at Forty-Two Home Street, right around the corner from Fred Allard. I think, the first thing I want to say is I'm not opposed to development in the shipyard area, but I am adamantly opposed to the scope and scale that has been proposed under this proposal. Just the heights of the buildings is showing they're shooting for the moon, clearly by walking up those buildings. The density of people in that area will cause a multitude of issues. We've already seen discussions about traffic, I'll talk to that a little bit more in a second. Sewage treatment is another concern. We have now a, three phases of a three-phase development going up in Stone Ridge that was originally planned to be sequential phases, now they're all happening at the same time. And then we're going to put in this Smilers Wharf project that will supposedly have to have the Mystic sewage treatment plant cross-connected with Stonington, and I've just heard rumors that Pocatuck Sewage Treatment Plant is cross-connected with Stonington. So I request that the Planning Commission, the staff, do a good analysis of how much sewage you're going to have to deal with, and are we going to be leaving sewage going into, untreated sewage going into the Mystic River?
At the present time, there is a moratorium on all new hookups to the Mystic sewer plant until they get the pumping stations and the connection and the funding to go to the Borough Plant. So there'll be no hook, and let even a single-family house can hook up now because this will fall at the present time.
So they can't?
They would not, no one would be able to build anything now until the sewer plant is connected to the Borough. We could approve things from other projects, but nothing can happen until this moratorium is lifted by the sewer authority.
I appreciate that. I know that the, I know the Mystic Triathlon that just happened was, actually, they canceled it, made it a biathlon because there was high E. coli in the Mystic River. I don't know what the source is, but I would like it to not be our sewage treatment plant. And I think you have a duty and an obligation to make sure that we preserve the river and our capabilities to dispose of any waste that we produce. I also think that, in my mind, the developers have shot for the moon in the expectation that they would rile up a very substantial amount of the town about this, but then ultimately looking at scaling back the plan to what they really were looking for down the road. And that angers me because I've spent time here, you've spent time here, and the rest of the town has spent time here opposing this adamantly, and I think it's just a strategy that people play to try to get through planning and zoning. I don't think that's appropriate, and I think they need to really, really change the scope of what they're looking to do. They shouldn't have the heights of the buildings as high as they have. They seem to have every little pile of land occupied with something, to the point where they don't have enough parking for everyone in that area. And those of you that have been down in downtown Mystic, even this the weekend, would know Greemanville was completely backed up with traffic all day long, all weekend. I live on Home Street, it's one of the main entries into downtown Mystic. It's a two-way road right now, but we will see huge amounts of traffic coming in and out from this facility. The Willow Street is absurdly tiny and one-way. I don't think we can handle that kind of traffic. And think about it, the bridge goes up every hour, backing up traffic to oblivion, and we're going to have people going, crossing from Smilers Wharf to get back out to anyplace else in Mystic. That traffic problem needs to be solved before you have any zoning change associated with this project.
Thank you.
The last thing I want to say is I think the Planning and Zoning Commission has a duty and obligation to us taxpayers, us residents here, and it's measured not by how much money we have in our wallets, but how much you're impacting the people of the town. So I would like you to consider that. Thank you.
David Snedeker, Eleven and Thirteen Washington Street, we're a direct butters immediately across the street from the proposed three-two-family, thirty-eight-foot-tall condominium units, or whatever you want to call them, and we're about a hundred and fifty feet from the fifth-floor proposed cocktail lounge restaurant on the roof of the hotel. So, just to give you a little orientation about where we live. I'd also like to say that the neighborhood, the public in general, is constantly depicted as naysayers. We are not naysayers. We have chosen to live in the village of Mystic. We know what that comes with. It comes with traffic, it comes with tourists, and frankly, we enjoy it. It's wonderful to have people come to town and visit and enjoy the things that we enjoy about our properties. But this plan is so flawed, it is unbelievably out of scale with Mystic. The proposal is obviously flawed in many ways, but it's flawed mostly in the unreasonable scale. It's flawed in how it has been presented to the public and the neighborhood as a done deal. There's been very little opportunity for public input in any of this, except at this forum, which turns into a very adversarial and non-constructive process. That is both the fault of the Planning Department and the entire NDD concept. The plan is flawed in how it inaccurately assumes that the current MC-80 zone is inappropriate for this parcel, and that the dilapidated state of the property is the result of a failing marine industry. To the contrary, the marinas of the Mystic River and New England in general are booming. The boatyard exists in its current dilapidated condition because the applicant has made choices that have allowed it to become so. This is a flawed plan because it stands in direct opposition to the town of Stonington's P O C D, in that it seeks to destroy over ten percent of the town's existing MC-80 zone property and replace it with non-water-dependent residential hotel and restaurant uses. It is a flawed plan also in that counter to the P O C D, it seeks to build one of the most intense residential concentrations in the town squarely in our most vulnerable flood hazard zone. This is a flawed plan also in that it provides inadequate parking for its own proposed uses. How ridiculous is that? The applicant should be providing twenty percent additional parking to ease the infrastructure problems of the town. The town's own engineer cites the inadequacies of the traffic study and warns of major traffic issues created at adjacent intersections. We, as voters and taxpayers of the town of Stonington, adopted a very fine piece of legislation in our P O C D. That document should serve as guidance in considering any far-reaching zone change, such as this application. The NDD zone should only be applied where it serves the P O C D. The NDD floating zone is the subordinate document and should only be approved where it furthers the P O C D's stated goals. As property owners, we put our faith in this document to protect our interests and our property value. It should not be lightly ignored. The plan is flawed in that it does not address any of the areas of concern associated with the conservation concepts of the P O C D. On the natural side of that consideration, the DEEP report addresses these flaws very well. The conservation aspects of the plan also applies to the conservation of the culture of the village of Mystic. The MC-80 zone is a core part of the cultural identity of our village, both historically and currently. Historically, Mystic is a maritime-dependent community. We exist as the village we now exist as because of our connection to the maritime industry. Our town should be supporting this and supporting this major portion of our economy. It's the portion of our economy that I happen to work in. I know all the boatyards on the river. Anything that further diminishes this, when there's already not enough boatyard zone property available to meet current demand, undermines our ability to remain viable in this part of Connecticut's economy and the region's economy. Make no mistake, granting NDD status to this property removes it forever from the industry and is a violation of the public trust as established under the Coastal Area Management Act. The plan is. The plan is flawed in that it violates the as-built culture of Mystic. The texture and architecture of Mystic have an identity and a feel. This plan has nothing to do with that culture. It is too tall, massive, and obtrusive. It's a bad fit. I completely understand and support the right of property owners to develop their properties within zoning regulations of the town. However, a zone change is sought for the development of this piece of property. That is a big ask. The applicant and the town are obligated to seek the input and approval of the community, and public opinion should be solicited and accommodated. I really feel that the NDD zone needed to have some public input component required of the consideration for zone change. It should have been a moderated town involved with the Planning Department, the applicant, and the public, so that the public's opinions could be honestly evaluated by the Planning Department.
We did, we did have a workshop about a year ago on this, before it all came up, with the public invited, with the applicant at that time. I don't know, maybe they did not give enough publicity on it, but we had a good half an hour's old workshop on. At, well, it was just, it was just a concept at that time.
Right. Right, but it's like, the problem is that it has set up this adversarial relationship where none existed need to.
No, I know, I agree with you.
Yeah, it's tough. So anyway, I'll try and wrap it up. It is a flawed plan in that it has not been socialized by the applicant or the town Planning Department. There have been no attempts to honestly receive feedback from the residential community. Presenting a fully-formed plan as a done deal is not the way to achieve community buy-in. The Planning Department might consider what I was just talking about. Anyway, everyone else has pretty much said most of what I was going to say, and I'll try and save us all time, but I would really like to ask why, when the MC-80 zone gives the applicant adequate tools to run a fantastic boatyard, it was only a few years ago that they stood before you and asked for a restaurant in Red Thirty-Six. They built a fabulously successful restaurant as a support facility to a boatyard, and here we are now, asking... And here we are now, asking to destroy it as a boatyard and build residences and turn it into something that it is not. It does not support the POCD. Thank you. Please reject this plan.
Jim Furlong, Paul Newman, Nick Salerno, Neil Spillane, Kail Claire Sada, Paul Sada, who's that? Rob Dracula, I guess that was it. William Shearer, Four-High Street, someone that... Who's that? Chris.
I don't know.
Okay. Nine... Will they come follow another all? And Donna Rae Rose.
Bill Shearer, Four-High Street. You box me in from Main Street, Cottrell Street, Washington Street, and Willow. I'm right in the middle of that. We have a parking problem. We have a parking problem right now. Last weekend, I drove by the Mystic Noank Library and the Baptist Church, and all the parking places were full. Drove through town, went home, wound up parking on Washington Street, and Washington Street was full, except for a place I found. We also have more than 20-day events, like Mystic Eats, Art Festival, that totally block the area. There's a lot of things going on that really need to be corrected. In the last three weeks, I've parked on Washington Street four times. That's four blocks from my house. I think if there's any use, the use has to have parking. We can't do it without parking. Parking rules. If this thing does come to fruition, Cottrell Street should be open into the side to be inclusive rather than exclusive. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Rae Rose. I am a 41-year resident of Mystic. I live at 27 Willow Street. I also own the property at 29 Willow Street and at 9 Broadway. I have 35 years of design, construction, master planning, and project management experience. In my career, I've placed over $1 billion of construction, renovation, and infrastructure on four continents: North America, South America, Africa, and Europe. And I've worked with some of the largest design, engineering, and construction management firms in the United States, if not the world. Skidmore, Oning's &amp; Merrill, Gilbane, which you know from the work they've done here, Turner, Structure Tone, Whiting-Turner, Len Lee's, Vanderwild, the list goes on and on. My 35 years of experience in the design, construction, and management of large projects, my single largest one being $177 million repurposing of a structure in the West Village in New York that's part of the historic district there, so everything had to be reviewed and approved by the New York City Landmarks Commission, has taught me that for a project to be successful, and the most successful projects need to be thoughtful, they need to be appropriate, and they need to be measured. I'm here before the board requesting that the zone change of Seaport Marine property and the associated master development plan be rejected, because the project embodies none of these attributes. And I recognize many of this has been discussed by your predecessors, so I'll go through it very quickly and briefly. In terms of being thoughtful, there's a long list of organizations, regulatory organizations that have come out and vehemently opposed the approval of this project. It's in violation of the Plan of Conservation and Development, which was adopted in 2015, so it's not a very old plan, which is supposed to set forth the mission and vision for the town. To decide to disregard that recommendation, which represents the work and the thoughtful input of so many people, really is a questionable decision, in my opinion. The DEEP, in their letter read at the last meeting, was vehemently opposed. The Mystic Fire District, the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission, as was mentioned earlier, the town engineer criticized the traffic study. These are all reputable organizations and regulatory agencies. They're not fly-by-night organizations whose goal is to have the best interest of the taxpayers and the town at heart. The neighborhood objections go beyond the "not in my backyard" accusation that's been leveled for so many people who have been opposed to this development, as demonstrated by the number of people who have taken their summer Monday evening, last meeting and this meeting, to come here and express their opinions. I personally went through and solicited petitions, signatures on Willow, Broadway, Church, Forsyth, and Frazier. I picked up 27 signatures, talked to 28 people, and not a single person was in favor of the development in its current design. There's been no discussion about sustainability. I don't know that the project was ever rated in terms of lead. Is it bronze? Is it silver? Is it gold? So, things like what level of current development qualify? There's no mention of green roofs, rainwater capture, gray water reuse, or solar. A lot of the construction technology... A lot of the construction technology being used as 20th-century means and methods for a development that should be 21st-century, state-of-the-art, and a tremendous quarter to Mystic. It is not. In terms of appropriateness, we've already, many people have already addressed the fact that this is quote-unquote "an underused property in disrepair." The decision over the 14-year ownership period of the current owners to make no capital investment in their property was a business decision. We, the taxpayers, should not be responsible for that, nor should it be the excuse for a zone change. The mere fact that this has been indicated it's not a viable, operable business, those comments have been addressed, given the fact that between Mason's Island and the bridge, there have to be almost 10 marinas, all chock-full, all viable, all looking to continue to do business. And Fred Allard, in his presentation, as had the previous gentleman, have really spoken to the data available that essentially negates that argument. It's not a viable business because the owner has chosen not to run it as such, not because it doesn't have the opportunity to be one. The DEEP has already made a point about it being a flood-prone area and indicated that encouraging residential occupancy, and Fred did a tremendous job of indicating what the issues and challenges there are. Encouraging residential occupancy there is irresponsible, absolutely irresponsible. And there were many comments about the mass and scale, about the development being inappropriate. The architect at the previous meeting used as her benchmarks the powerhouse, Stonington Commons, and the main block. The powerhouse and Stonington Commons are buildings built before planning and zoning probably ever existed, and their carryovers from a different place and time in Mystic's history. They were repurposed, they're not new construction. This is brand-new construction, and the heights, masses, and scaling are totally inappropriate. The main block is, in fact, one story larger than what exists. It sits on a main commercial thoroughfare, and it's across the street from a building of comparable scale and mass. There is nothing out of the marina that is remotely close to 75 feet tall. And I really, quite frankly, have an issue with the architect's cavalier attitude, that we lived with the powerhouse and Stonington Commons for 100 years, so what's the big deal with a 75-foot building? If you take that attitude, if I can see New Haven and Hartford from my home, then does that mean I can put a 20-foot office tower on Willow Street? Many people have mentioned the parking is totally inadequate, the overflow will be absorbed by the adjoining neighborhood. I live across the street from the post office. For 41 years, I have watched people block my driveway when there's been an open parking space two cars further down Willow because they didn't want to walk the distance. With all due respect, no one is going to use the 100-satellite parking spaces when they can park on Jackson or Washington and walk in.
Thank you.
That is absolutely unfounded. In terms of measured, certainly, and I will sum up in respect for the time, I really graded with sitting and listening to everybody who is in favor of this development, call anyone who had any opposition to it anti-development. All the taxpayers are asking for is to exercise their right to have a voice in their local government's decisions. That's why we are all here, instead of rubber-stamping anything that's thrown in front of us. We're asking, and we expect, that the board and the director of planning will do their jobs, they'll follow the procedures in a thoughtful, responsible, unbiased, and transparent manner. So for all of these reasons, I respectfully request, I strongly recommend the zoning change be denied. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, excuse me. I asked before the other meeting, would you please hold your applause? We are influenced by facts, not by applause, and it would be moving a lot faster if we did not have the applause. Thank you, and please cooperate with us. We're trying to get through this. You know, we're all volunteers up here, we're all working for the town, we all think it's the best for the town, and we are listening. So let us continue. Thank you.
Before you start the stopwatch on me, I would like to say, I'm not a resident of the town of Stonington, but I am a 60-year resident of the Mystic Fire District. And about 25 years ago, the town of Stonington and the Fire District was faced with an almost identical situation as you were faced with through these meetings, which is a defunct property, the Cottrell property, the Lum Yard, was foreclosed, and the Fire District was faced with, I'd say, the vultures of condo heaven coming to probably the finest piece of property on the Mystic River. And we're concerned about it. A miracle occurred, they went into the auction in Boston and got the property. I hope everybody here realizes that the Fire District is a private company, just as the Smilers Wharf project is. They are not a public agency. They decided that for the benefit of the Fire District, that River Park would be a better solution than condos, profit-making, commercial establishments, and so on. The officers of the Fire District felt that they were busy running a fire department, so they created the Mystic River Park Commission, and I became the first chairman. And I'll tell you the charges they gave to me and my commission. First one was to get it built. And that went from everything from the federal regulations, Army Engineers, Coast Guard, state regulations, working on the waterfront, getting access to the waterfront. We succeeded. We built that park for Mystic, for Stonington, at no cost to Stonington at all. The second charge they placed on my commission was, in the time that you're creating the park, hold as many transparent public meetings as you possibly can, and ask the Fire District what they want the park to do, number one. What do you want it to do? And he said, "We want a park where we can enjoy looking at the river and not looking through the deckhouses of yachts parked along a marina waterfront." They wanted a green, a place where anybody could come, that the residents would be welcome, visitors would be welcome, tourists would be welcome, but don't use the property to draw in commercial entertainment. The next thing they said was, "We don't want any commercial sales on the waterfront. We don't want any alcohol sales on the waterfront." And we got into trouble with the Chamber of Commerce because they wanted to run beer holes on the Mystic River Park. So here we are, 25 years later. I would frankly say, I don't think anybody in town would want that have changed to condo heaven. And yet, you're looking at a similar project just a few blocks south of that same area, saying, "Oh, it's going to be great if we let commercial evidence, commercial opportunities bring traffic, tourists into town with a modest increase in the grand list." That's a folly. In the 60 years I've been in town, I've been involved with traffic studies, I've been involved with attempts to find any solutions to access to the area, there are none. When you look from the interstate at Exit 89 and Downey, they funnel either down to the flagpole or to US-1 on the east side, US-1 on the west side, and on the east side, they end up at Washington Street. And there isn't anybody in this audience that has ever traveled either down Broadway or from Greenvale Avenue into Washington Street that ever expects to see a two-lane highway into Smilers Wharf. There is no solution unless you're willing to exercise eminent domain and tear down residents and properties to get an avenue in there. There is no traffic solution that's going to improve with this development. The parking inventory in downtown Mystic, and every one of us here, has heard that the parking problem is always there. The parking inventory hasn't changed plus or minus 1% in 50 years, and we've had so many commissions and committees looking at it. Unless you want to tear down historic buildings or neighborhoods, there is no place else. And yet, here we are faced with a group that says, "Oh, we're going to take all the old derelict buildings off, and we're going to start with seven and a half acres of clear property," and they haven't made a single offer to provide any increase in our parking inventory. They haven't made any effort to say how we will improve Washington Street from a one-lane street at busy times. And consequently, all I can say is, those who don't remember the history are willing to repeat the mistakes. I guess my final shot is, building in a floodplain, anybody that thinks they're going to solve that problem by building higher bulkheads and so on, fail to, and then put their buildings on stilts, as soon as it starts flooding, all of that parking space that's part of the parking inventory that the Smilers Wharf says is available will be flooded with cars, and the people there will take their cars and go elsewhere, so the parking inventory gets less. And so the numbers have been kind of fiddled a bit to say, "We barely meet the parking requirements." They don't meet the parking requirements. Parking in a floodzone is folly. So I hope that your commission will take a hard look at what you did right once up the street at the Mystic River Park and not try to correct it with a commercial development.
Thank you.
I'm Nick Salerno, Dennison Avenue, Mystic.
I'm Nick Salerno, Dennison Avenue, Mystic. And first, let me just thank everyone who went before who was so eloquent, and I'm going to save a lot of your time because I'm not going to repeat any of that, it's getting late. I have a background in science, so I look at numbers maybe a little differently. No one has mentioned a lot of numbers, so I just kind of leafed through the report, looked at a couple of facts, and I was kind of puzzled when I tried to get the numbers to work. As to parking spaces, I think I read it correctly that the allocation for parking spaces for restaurants is one car for four seats. Now, personally, when I go to dinner, I take my wife, that's two. When I go to dinner, I take my wife, that's two people. Very rarely do I have the back seats filled. Sometimes people go to the restaurant just to meet someone else, that's one person per car. In a 100-seat restaurant like Red 36, that's 25 places allotted, that's not enough space, especially then when you count the 15 spots allotted to the workers. When I sit in the restaurant, I can see 12 or 15 people running around with black shirts and a Red 36 on the back, that's not even counting who's in the kitchen. So I think the numbers are skewed a little bit to make it look like a doable project, I'm not so sure that's true. As for the off-site parking, if you drive past the Packard Building, just about any time, you'll see about four empty spots. It's always filled, middle of the day, middle of the week, just about any time. That's just the parking numbers. The only other number I want to bring up is the elevation above sea level, which is about two to three feet, and that doesn't leave a lot of room for flooding events, and it's low enough that in the next 20 to 30 years, the mortgages on the townhouses won't be paid off before their feet are wet. So I don't see how they can want to stay there, or anybody would want to go there, I think it's all wet. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Claire Sardar, and I live at 12 Jackson Avenue, but I first want to read a letter that was given to me by a woman that lives at Jerry Brown Road, Stone Ridge. She's a resident of Stone Ridge for about 14 years now. Her letter is, "To the Stonings Plan and Zoning Commission, I have been following the Smilers Wharf discussion with residents of the area in question from the day and from my own ventures into the area detailed. I feel that your first selectmen is trying to create an unlivable, long-run invitation to disaster for your future and his. I live in Stone Ridge, and I am well aware of the parking problem in downtown Mystic, as well as the hazards of climate change, water level changes that are in store. Please heed the DEEP judgments, signed by Sally Taylor," which I will submit this as well. So that's her letter. Next is my letter. And I'm sorry, but you will hear repetition here. I just got here when my neighbor Dave Snedeker spoke, so I hadn't heard anyone before that, but I was here at the last meeting. I live at the corner of Jackson and Washington Street, 12 Jackson Avenue, at the four-way stop, my property of Blackseaport Marine. And I've lived at this property for over 50 years. So for the record, that's 50, five, zero, 50. And with the exception of our good neighbors, the Hartley family, I don't know if they're here tonight, they were here last week, and Mr. Hartley, with the exception of them at 36 Washington, I am the longest-standing consecutive neighbor in that neighborhood. I was raised there with my four siblings, I went to Broadway School, Mystic Junior High, Stonington High School, I got married and chose to stay in downtown Mystic, I was very fortunate to be able to stay in my family home. My husband and I have raised four children in that home, who went to Dean's Mill, Mystic Middle, and Stonington High School. So we've been a very huge part of this town for a long time. I know the town, I love the town, I love Mystic, I've always loved living in Mystic. And I have to give a shout out to these, I'm so humbled and appreciative of the opposition townwide. I can't say enough how grateful I am for people from all over town opposing this monstrosity. So it's not just me, NIMBY person, not in my backyard, that's nothing to do with it. We are getting incredible support all over. I've had people come up to me all over town, especially ones that know where I live, telling me, "Wow, what do you think of that's going on? Isn't that outrageous?" People are outraged, they're pissed, they're angry, and I've had people say to me, this has never happened in my life, that they feel sorry for me now for where I live. That's never, ever happened to me. Now I feel sorry for where I live. I've never, ever felt bad about living in downtown Mystic. I loved downtown Mystic. So, as you can imagine, after 50 years, with 50 years of living there, I have seen change. And that's another thing I resent, is people telling us that we don't want change. I've seen, like what Neil Spillane just pointed out, I remember Cotrell lumber, I remember Mystic lumber, I remember Mystic before it had Steamboat Wharf condos and those other condos next to SMP, I don't even know what they're called. There's been so many changes, and I've welcomed change, I've embraced change, but this is my first time speaking out at a planning and zoning meeting. And I'm here because this is so incredibly important to my quality of life, to the life of downtown Mystic, and our community at whole, especially our neighborhood. So this isn't about change. This application is not about, well, it is about change, but to me, it's an unabashed, in-your-face assault to downtown Mystic as I know it, and most especially to our small neighborhood. I'd like to ask if any of those that are proposing this, any of the applicants or their team of experts, live in downtown Mystic? I don't mean drive-through, I don't mean have a business there, I don't mean visit. Do they live there? I don't think they do, not one of them does. And that's a huge difference. I've lived there, 12 months a year, seven days a week, four seasons, 50 art festivals, uncountable bridges going up, there's, I live there, I know the area. And so because of that longevity, I feel that I can speak quite accurately on what may or may not enhance or detract, and those are words taken right out of our lovely little NDD. I know what will enhance or detract from my neighborhood, and I resent being told by people who have never lived there, and I'd like to quote Harry Boardson on this, people have never been here, this is a quote in a past article on this, who said, Harry Boardson said, "It will blend in and not hurt the character of the neighborhood." He doesn't live there. He doesn't live there seven days a week to see the massive traffic that we see, the floods, the cracked roads. Just the addition of Red 36 has dramatically negatively impacted my neighborhood with innumerable more traffic, noise, cars. I would invite any one of you, I mean this, come over to my house any weekend, sunny one is better, sit on my deck, and we will count together how many people turn around in my driveway because they can't find Red 36. All day long, it starts Friday evening and it goes straight through to Sunday. I had a cousin, we went away in early May for a weekend, and one of my cousins, I asked her to come over and watch my dog, and her texted me later when we got home was, "Claire, it was great, I love sitting on your deck, but I am amazed at how many people turned around in your driveway." I'm like, "Yeah, I am, welcome to that side of Mystic." And yet, Smilers Wharf, this is a lovely little flyer we got in the mail a few days before the last meeting, two-sided glossy from the Boardson, Harry Boardson and the Holstein family, you know, kind of like a campaign brochure. And so, one of the things, and it's interesting to me, they call this fun facts. There's nothing fun about this. This isn't fun, I don't want to be here tonight, like all my neighbors and everyone in this room, it's the second summer night I've given up, not counting countless sleepless nights and all the angst that this might be happening in my neighborhood. So one of these fun facts, and I quote this, "We never want to burden the neighborhood with development." It's laughable. We never. If that was true, I don't think any of us would be here tonight, because this proposal wouldn't be happening. So they're telling me that a 45-foot, 73, 45-unit, 73-foot hotel restaurant, sorry, 73-foot hotel, a restaurant that's double the size of Red 36, a seven-story apartment building, 16 townhouses, six multifamily units, all without enough onsite parking, not even close, planted in a small neighborhood with narrow, worn-out, cracked roads, nose-thigh blocks that floods in a heavy rain, they're saying that that doesn't qualify as a burden or won't impact our parking or quality of life? I'd like to take a quote from Dave Collins' column, who, he's my new best friend. He's awesome. I've never met the guy, I don't know him, but he has brought this flawed-to-be-kind proposal, exposing it to the public, to let people know what's really going on, and I would like to meet him and thank him personally. But to use his example, we could ask a first grader, is this impacting our neighborhood? I think even a first grader would know that. But what I'd rather ask is, what are they smoking? And I'll say that again, what are they smoking? If this proposal wasn't so arrogant and offensive, it would be laughable, it would be laughable. But I'm not laughing, my neighbors aren't laughing. It has already gotten the condemnation of the DEEP, it flies directly in the face of our own town plan of conservation and development, as you well know, as almost every person up here is just hammering that home to you, and our own NDD. So the question just begs, why and how have we gotten this far? I implore you to do the only right thing tonight, and deny this zone change, keep it M-80.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Chris Christos, I am a resident of the 43rd District. I hold my degrees in environmental engineering and environmental science with three Connecticut State Certificates in Hazmat. I also served six years on North Stonington Zoning Board of Appeals, and served in support of Representative Diana Urban on sensitive environmental issues concerning the protection of the health of children and the environment of the state of Connecticut. I speak in adamant opposition to the proposed zone change known as Smilers Wharf. I agree with those who have spoken in opposition before me. Your job here should be made easier, knowing that your guidelines have been set out for you in the plan of conservation and development, and these determinations have already been addressed by previous speakers and have been made clear. Allow me to mention just one, I cite from your Regulation 72132, quote, "Any such change shall be made in such a way as not to disrupt the surrounding residential neighborhood," end quote. It is ludicrous to assume that a change of this magnitude would not be disruptive. Your task has also been made easier by the expert testimony of the Connecticut DEEP. They have warned of the dangers, the potential loss of life, and the liabilities involved with this project. You have also heard testimony from a previous commissioner of the DEP under the role and administration, who contends there is no environmental danger, and advises you to ignore the findings of DEP. It may come as no surprise to you that most, if not all, of government and governor appointments of commissioners are political appointments and are not appointments because of expertise. It is the job of the commissioner to listen to the experts who work under whichever commissioner is appointed. The facts remain the same, only the politics change. I highly recommend that you ignore the advice of this well-paid role and appointed commissioner, and instead listen to the advice of the impartial experts of present-day DEP that are working for you and the citizens of Connecticut. My objections to this zone change are many, and in total agreement with the Connecticut DEEP's environmental and life-threatening declarations. They are specific to this location. Other sites may have their own problems, but are not nearly as dangerous to life and the environment. This proposal is an environmental disaster waiting to happen. The hazmat problems will be never-ending, and the actual potential for life, loss of life in an emergency is definitely present and increases every year. Fact, the sea waters are rising at an ever-increasing rate. Other towns are already preparing for this. Fact, storms are intensifying and increasing in number at an alarming rate. Fact, danger and loss of life has already occurred in other areas as a result of these conditions. Please do not become complacent simply because we have not had a major storm in years. Please do not disregard your P-O-C-D, P-O-D-C, sorry. I implore you, do not ignore the experts at DEP, do not ignore the danger of loss of life, and certain monetary infrastructural obligations that the town of Stonington will inevitably be forced to bear. Financial incentive to the town will not compensate for the risk and the loss.
Hello, my name is Paul Sardar, live at 12 Jackson Avenue, Mystic. I have a really fat file here, but I'm not going to talk that long, because so much has been said, like my wife Claire who just spoke. I'm a newbie, I've only been here 34 years, the 34 years we've been married, so I'm relatively new to my neighborhood. But I'm overwhelmed by the support throughout town. When this was first presented, and actually, the initial master plan was floated years ago, certainly about 10 years ago, and it was out there and then it disappeared, and now it's back, and I don't know why it's back, but it's back. There's a lot of reasons. I want to thank everybody for coming out and supporting our little neighborhood, which in essence, as you'll hear, is really supporting yourself. I want to thank Neil Spillane, I was on, not the first park commission, but I think the second year in, 24 years ago, I was the person responsible for designing the children's park that the 53 or 63-foot-high building will overshadow, that's going to be their boutique hotel. There's a couple of things I want to present, I'm presenting for a couple of There's a couple of things I want to present. I'm presenting for a couple of different people. There is a PowerPoint presentation. A gentleman in our, in our neighborhood put it together. We didn't, he didn't get it together so you could show it, we didn't have a projector. But he printed it out, so I have some copies for you. And they put it together and it basically talks about some impact on the neighborhood during storms and, and just activity. So that's, I think there's a copy, I believe I got seven copies there, I don't know if it's enough, but I'm sure Keith can make more copies. I have a big list of things to say, but as I said, many people have said it, said them. I've been coming to PCC meetings for twenty-five years. This is really the easiest decision I've ever seen that PCC has had to make. There's a lot of hullabaloo and a lot of excitement, but it's really a classic no-brainer, what you guys have, based on the facts of the proposal. It, it should have been dead on arrival, and the biggest question is, is why it hasn't? It's amazing. We had a two, two-hotel proposal for NDD at the top of the hill, behind Holiday Inn Express, and they withdrew. I was actually gonna go to that meeting and talk in general comments that that's where it should be, and then they withdrew. And they had nowhere near the opposition that, that this had. I don't see, I know Mr. Sweeney and his team did an hour and a half presentation, whatever, but when you look at the regulations from all things people have talked about, from the POC, the DEEP, and our actual NDD regulations, they haven't really given one valid reason for approval, except NDD gives vast discretion to you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, so give it to us. Other than that, I haven't seen them quote the NDD regulations, other than that. Certainly, they're avoiding the POCD. So many reasons why it should be rejected, I'm gonna try to fire through. No consultation with neighbors, none to speak of. Dave Snedeker talked about this. I was never approached, some neighbors had been. Pretty much, we got, that's the plan. No, I'm not negotiating. It's a done deal. Those are all separate quotes that we got from Mr. Bortson at various times. Underutilized property, that's been discussed. By using this definition of underutilized property, if you own a single family and zoning allows you to put a three-family there, I guess that's underutilized too. So it's, 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 it's not a good, it's not a good basis for a zone change. One example, we have one NDD zone, if everybody is not aware, in Parketuck. Keith Bryans, our town planner, was gracious enough to explain this to me. It's basically a triangle between Mechanic Prospect and Mitchell Streets. It was M1 Zone, basically a dilapidated parking lot on Mechanic Street. And a great opportunity for this type of design. Nobody's gonna build a factory there. And it was actually a nice townhouse and apartment design, nowhere near the scope of this. Not a viable marine business. It, it, that's an idiotic concept even to contemplate. I can't, it's like trying to argue that the sun isn't hot in this market. And, and I'm not gonna go into detail, I'm gonna leave that to, I'm gonna read a letter to use part of my time, or part of this time, from Christian McGugan, he's managing partner of Gwenmore Marine, Marina and Gwenmore Marine Contracting. I'll submit this as a, as an exhibit. He sent this to me and asked me to read it. So I'll do that, Mr. Chairman. It says, "Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission, to make the claim that current economic environment in Stonington is not good for business engaged as marinas/boatyards is false and ridiculous. Most marinas in town, including ours, are near or at 100% occupancy. The local marina community is a small one and the boatyards are mostly family-owned and operated. The operators are generally friendly competitors and share similar circumstances and obstacles. They also share a common belief that cutthroat competition isn't really necessary because if you run a good business, have good employees, services and facilities, there are more than enough potential customers to go around. The number of boaters is ever-increasing while the number of available slips is not." Again, this is Christian McGugan, managing partner of Gwenmore Marina. He goes on. "Good facilities, services, amenities and employees are essential items. And if a marina fails in any of these areas, some sort of drop-off in business would be expected. In my opinion, I fall short in more than one or all of these areas requires a degree of neglect and would certainly cause the boat owners, the lifeblood of any marina, to go elsewhere. If the justification for the proposed zone change is that the local marina business is struggling and certain prime waterfront properties are not viable as marinas, then I strongly disagree with that notion and would urge your commission to contact the Connecticut Marine Trades Association, who could provide statistics and facts to show that overall marinas and boating are as active, robust and profitable as ever. Sincerely, Christian McGugan, managing partner." I go on, fiscal benefit, I'll, I'll fly through this, fiscally beneficial to the town and the state. It's not. We have, from the state perspective, there was a bond application, we haven't talked about that a lot. But there was a $10 million bond application with a, a flawed application. Senator Heather Summers and Representative Kate Rotell's name was on the top of it, I spoke to both of them. I, I believe they're here tonight, if they want to speak, they can talk from that perspective.
Objection, Mr. Chairman. Financing of the project is not an issue tonight. Whether we finance it privately or publicly, whether we break our piggy banks open to finance it, it's not a zoning issue.
It was part of their proposal, the financing, their fiscal analysis was part of their proposal. I'll fly right down to the bottom of the bond proposal. The bottom of the bond proposal said-
Mr. Chairman, I resume my objection.
Happy, happy to hear you. The bottom of it says-
Mr. Chairman, I resume my objection.
The bottom of the proposal says that the applicant will, the applicant will, will deed the boardwalk to the town. So I'll talk about the EDC now. They will deed the, the boardwalk to the town. There is no, the EDC did not give an analysis, I don't see it in the report, as to how they planned to take care of this. I've been on the park commission on and off for twenty-five years. We have properties that we rent, which supplies money, which we have hundreds of thousands of dollars in, on account to take care of issues, like painting, like roofing, like our boardwalk, like our bulkhead, like our floating docks that we provide for, for transients. There's nothing in the EDC proposal. You're talking about a boardwalk, a very expensive one, if I look at the picture, and a bulkhead, twice the length of Mystic River Park. Yet there is nothing in there about how are we gonna pay for it. The modest economic benefit, $43,000 a year, which the, the applicant changed to $249,000 a year because they just said there's no, no school impact, is not enough. I see no benefit, no real fiscal benefit. It's all theory. All right, there you go. Rental market, these are gonna be, it was nice to see that the fiscal analysis provided by the applicant initially gave us a $43,000 benefit. They said that because they, the impact of schools. They removed that and now we have a $249,000 benefit because they said it's not gonna be school-aged families. They said for a couple of reasons. One in particular was, initially, remember, they said, I believe, quote, "Mystic needs more new rentals." Now that tells me Mystic needs long-term rentals, maybe for a year? Yet now, they say, "No, these will be primarily vacation, short-term rentals." So which is it? You can't talk out of both sides of your mouth. So when they're trying to tell us that they're gonna provide rentals in town, and then the next proposal, they say, "No, we're not." So what they did is they proved my point. This is not a bunch of rentals or residents. This is a ninety-plus-unit hotel complex. That's what it is. Maintain border control, I talked about that. Mystic needs a boost, ridiculous. This is another sun is hot, hot argument. It's ridiculous. Have any of these people, now I know they're paid to say what they've gotta say, because they're told, "Say whatever it takes." Anybody can come downtown Mystic when it's sunny, Monday through Friday now, in the season. It's, it's just ridiculous. The last place that the state needs to put money or we need to do anything to court a private investor, the last place we need it is in Stony, is in Mystic. Parking won't be a problem, I believe I've got a neighbor who will be talking about that. We have facts, not theory. They've provided lots of theory. Do you know, if you guys looked at their, at their theory, they say right now, the configuration they have is right now. All they need is seventy-two parking spaces for Red Thirty-Six and for a hundred and twenty slips. We have documented proof, observation, that there's anywhere between a hundred and sixty and over two hundred and forty cars on that site on the weekends. Much change to say the same, that's just, I, how do you respond to that? Much change to say the same? I mean, please. All right, uh, maybe the last, if you don't, I, I've actually heard someone from our Board of Finance comment to someone that if you don't approve this, this could be affordable housing. First of all, I don't have any problem with affordable housing, I'm not intimidated by that in Mystic. Second of all, the DEEP, you think they're gonna look less, or you, as a Planning and Zoning Commission, should look less favorably on low-income people getting flooded out and, and, and being in a safety, a, a, a problem, safety issue than wealthy people? I don't think so. The DEP's position on, on residential units stands, and we've talked to them. I, I hope you have. Uh, but the biggest lie out there is really, that I've heard mentioned over and over again, and I'll make this my, almost the last one, is that, you guys all know the regulations. The point that just get the master plan passed and during site review, don't worry, we can, we can, we can cut this back, we can scale it back. We actually had good people, who I know, who I think are my friends, actually take that position. I asked this question of Keith Bryans and he said, when I asked him if Planning and Zoning, if the applicant goes to Planning and Zoning for site review, can they, and, and master plan is approved for a seventy-three-foot-high building, a sixty-three-foot-high building, and so on and so forth, can the Planning and Zoning arbitrarily say, "No, now we want a fifty-foot-high building?" "No, now we want less mass." No, they can't. Keith's reply is, the basic answer to your question is no, unless there is valid reason. While there is public hearing, the site plan process is essentially an administrative one that shows compliance with the approved master plan and other requirements. I'm gonna file down. He's basically saying this, this site plan review is for drainage, uh, maybe some design of the buildings, that type of thing. However, uh, the mast, this is quote, "The master plan establishes the basic framework for the zone, including number of units, building heights, general building sizes. More details won't affect these items that much. If a master plan shows a seventy-foot-tall building, it is essentially the same concept as a conventional zoning district listing a maximum building height of seventy feet. I advise the commission to report to, to address these concerns they now have while they have the most discretion." I also plan on stating this in their staff comments. So you, that you have as much right at a site plan review to stop them from a seventy-foot building after it's been maintained, after it's been approved on master plan, as they do if you're an RH-10, to tell you, "You can't put more square footage if your floor area ratio is under what's approved." That is the zone. And last but not least, this isn't just about Mystic, folks. NDD zone, uh, does restrict to a minimum of a hundred thousand, fifty thousand square feet, 3.4 acres or so. Except in DV5, by the way, uh, instead PV5, which allows eighty thousand square foot zones. But this, this similar development could happen throughout town. There can be up to five of these, there's already one. That means there could be four more. And to fit this, imagine a seventy-foot-high building at Coastside Marina. And that little hotel, you know, that's across from the karate place on Route One? There's two, there's ten acres there that this could be. Imagine grouping, uh, land from Gwenmore Marina all the way to Brewers, all that's MC80. Seventy-foot-high buildings there. Imagine your PV5 zone, all you people who live in Parketuck. Your PV5 zone, and I was at those meetings. Uh, they already require around forty to fifty-foot-high buildings, which a lot of you guys didn't like it passed. They pass this, they can package property in only eighty thousand square feet, so two acres. And they could put seventy-foot-high buildings there too, if it's approved here, theoretically. Now these, these can be, "Oh, but, but an investor has to do this." By the way, it could also happen in the borough. You have a PV5 zone next to, uh, the, the, where, uh, the marina where, uh, Dog Watch is. And, and they can be there too, they can package that there. It can happen. Uh, I'm done with that. I'm just gonna provide you petitions now. We have, we've submitted, uh, there's a, as you know, I submitted to, uh, oh, you guys have that one. We have a protest petition, I'll give it to you in a second, Jason. A protest position, petition, uh, that's a legislative, uh, opportunity that if we provide, uh, signatures of property owners that own a minimum of twenty percent of the land area within five hundred feet of the zone change. What that does is it forces a two-thirds vote for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Rather than a majority vote, three to two, they now need a four to one vote. I know that they, we just provided that with them today. I know they have to certify that. Just so you know, forty percent of the landowners within that five hundred, five hundred feet of, within Mystic on the Stony side, signed that petition. It, it's an immense number. I've also, uh, we asked some people to sign a petition. This petition reads, "We, the undersigned residents or taxpayers of the town of Stonington oppose the proposed zone change to the Seaport Marine property." This is similar to, uh, the legislative zoning wording. Further, uh, with just sixty-two total acres, that's quoted from the POCD, currently zoned marine commercial, it's actually closer to a hundred acres. "We request that the Planning and Zoning Commission amend NDD zoning regulations to conform to the 2015 POCD by removing MC80 as a qualifying zone." This is a, this is a stack of, of, uh, names. There may be four or five that aren't, but they're all Stonington residents. There's over four hundred names here of people just like you throughout town, from Mystic, from, from, I would say, from shore to shore, from Parketuck to Mystic and everywhere in between, that have said no to this and said, "Get MC80 out of the POCD", like should have been the first thing that our Planning and Zoning Commission did in 2015 when it was passed. I strongly recommend, uh, Keith, uh, rather, Christian McGugan recommends, and four hundred seventeen people recommend that you reject this zone change. Thank you. For your patience.
Janice, Janice Make. Allen's, forty-four, I'm gonna call his addresses, it's faster. Forty-four Home Street, fourteen Jackson Avenue, sixteen Alden Street, six thirty-two Noank Road, ten Jackson Avenue, seventeen Joyce Street, Four Fallon Road, and I'm off, excuse me. Six Joyce Street, sixty-eight Wilcox Road, two Robin Street, forty-two Home Street, and three-two-three Cove Road. Okay, but go right ahead.
Everyone's going the wrong way. I'm Anne Marie Foster. I work at fifteen Home Street. I have worked there for ten years and I've watched the water come and go. I've watched the people who come to see the water come and go. Last Friday, it took me fifteen minutes to drive from Greenville down Home Street to the northern end of the Schooner Wharf parking lot, which is probably a thousand yards. Fifteen minutes because of parking, uh, because of traffic, excuse me, from backing up from the bridge traffic. People will come to the water, but they can get there many ways. They don't need another spot where they will park on our end of Mystic and go to the water. I am a geriatric care manager. I have to drive clients to different places because they can no longer drive. It took me an hour and a half to drive up to Academy Point, pick up an elderly woman, take her to Citizens Bank. take her to Citizens Bank for 10 minutes, and then back to Academy Point. The traffic is unbearable. I would prefer to walk, but I can't walk my 90-year-old clients. So I ask that you take that into consideration, and remember that there is already public access to the water. They don't need another one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Janice Mink, um, and I'm a former resident of what I used to call the Presidential District, Lincoln, Jackson, Roosevelt, Washington. I lived on Washington Street. I now live in Pawtucket. And, um, I think this is a town-wide issue. I've been living in Pawtucket for five years, and, um, many of my neighbors there know where I come from, and they've talked to me about this. And there is widespread concern also in our neighborhood about this project. Uh, because people work in Mystic and they also love Mystic, they grew up in Mystic, they now live in Pawtucket because it's a more affordable neighborhood, um, their old neighborhood is, you know, maybe not so affordable where they grew up in Mystic. What I wanna say is I, I oppose the project for many of the same reasons, um, that people have cited here. We've had very articulate speakers, but I, um, I think it's an unusual opportunity also for Stonington. And what I see is a town-wide attention to this nexus of economic development, the problem of traffic, and also ecology. Um, and there's, there's kind of one solution for this, back to the drawing board, I would say. Uh, the spirit of generosity that I see in this project, and I'm, I'm actually seeing one in the offer of the boardwalk, which as Paul says, might be a can of worms physically, but, uh, for my eye and for my physical being, I think extending the boardwalk is, is a great idea. Um, I love the idea of the farmer's market and the plaza, um, if that could be done in such a way that cars don't take human bodies there. So, we actually had a public meeting, which Jason called, and it was about biking in Mystic, in Stonington. That might seem like an unrelated issue. For me, this is not an unrelated issue. I think the bigger picture is, and this is the opportunity that this project offers us, the bigger picture is, we have a town-wide problem. River to river, we need to have a more ecological attitude towards moving people. We need to be kinder to the people who live here. And, you know, zoning must be careful. Are you trying to send a message to the residents of neighborhoods, you are unwelcome in your own neighborhood? So, if you are in the way of economic development, um, you better move, or tough it out, or just lump it. I think that's not good. That said, there are aspects of this plan that I find in, in a sort of generous spirit, the boardwalk, the plaza. Um, so I would hope that some sense of compromise could occur without changing the zoning. So I oppose the zoning change. But I feel like this whole community, uh, spirit that it has raised, and the ideas that it has raised are very valuable. It's a very valuable experience, and it supports things that Jason actually has, has been interested in and has started, um, and has thought about. I've heard him speak many times about how many parking spots are available to human, you know, as opposed to human beings and so on. So I know he hates cars. Um, I don't, I don't wanna have us all riled up in hating our public officials. I, I feel like we need to come together on this, and, um, you know, but that said, I oppose the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Roseanne Smiley. I live on Cove Road. Thank you, commission members, for coming out and listening to us. Planners of Smiler's Wharf, this large waterfront development, need to listen to the concerns of residents and act on them with honesty, transparency, and patience to help fashion a desirable and acceptable outcome. While mixed-use waterfront development is welcome in Mystic, the proposal's scope is overwhelming while its benefits are underwhelming. Please consider the following as you move forward. Flooding already exists here. How would this project stay literally above water without essential flood control measures that the state said it would not build? On-site parking needs to be increased to accommodate more traffic in an already congested Mystic. It is July 8th, and gridlock prevails throughout the town, even without the development, this development, and without the completion of the Perkins Farm project. Historical buildings and homes within the project should be innovatively integrated into the plan to preserve and enhance the area's historic nature. The proposed building height should be lowered to better fit within the neighborhood. Finally, an annual, a net annual tax revenue increase, I heard it increased more than this, but it was $120,000 after town and school expenses, is a pittance and a pity. Stonington deserves a better outcome. I am against the zone change, but I think that there could be a, a workable plan if, um, these considerations and many of the others that have already been brought up here are taken, uh, into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Steele, 68 Wilcox Road. Thank you, planning and zoning. I was on the ZVA for 13 years, and I appreciate all of your hard work. I have a business of downtown Mystic. I'm giving a different perspective, 38 years in the same location. I think I have a pretty good idea of the heartbeat of downtown. Traffic has gotten ridiculous the past couple of years. Tourism is great, we depend on it. We also depend on the locals during the holidays and off-season. If we didn't have them, we wouldn't be around. And this community that's being affected will be devastated. And I just want your utmost, this is important to downtown, and I appreciate your hard work working this out. It needs to be worked out. It's the last puzzle. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is James Gibbs. I've been an abutting landowner at 14 Jackson Avenue for 14 years. That's on the east side of what locals refer to as Spar Yard Cove. I'm also a licensed architect and a state-certified architecture historian, and therefore request that you consider my testimony tonight here with as an expert witness. In such capacity, I wrote the historic district guidelines for the Town of Groton, which includes the other side of Mystic. I was also a charter member of the Mystic River Park Commission. Uh, primarily, uh, my job was to coordinate the landscape architecture. I really wanted to be up here in support, but I just cannot, given the extraordinary size of the proposal. The proposed project needs to be cut literally by three quarters. I hope I might be up here in a month or two to support a substantially revised project. As such, I recommended the applicant withdraw its application and resubmit. I have been a customer of the applicant in both Noank and Mystic, and I admire the Holstein family approach at Noank as to its wonderfully maintained and operated Marina in Noank. I have hoped they would do the same over the last years at Mystic, but it seems its design professionals have advised otherwise. The commissions should all have my memo of 28 June 2019 as issued the scheduled date of their first hearing date. I shall not reread same to expedite, I shall just highlight my concerns per that memo. DEP should weigh in per the Coastal Management Act. It did just that a few aft, a few hours after I submitted my memo. We all know now that DEP has advised against the proposed zone change. If the project's approved and the flood plain is proposed, the town will likely lose its favorable rating for flood insurance, and we who live elsewhere in the flood plain will all see our rates increase. The townhouses should be limited altogether. The applicant is proposing an approximate 15, 1-5 setback from a coastal resource. The proposed townhouses will obstruct the view from our Jackson Avenue residents. On our side of the cove, we must maintain a 100-feet rear yard setback from the marsh as part of RC 120, intended by the town to protect this important shoreline feature. RC 120 should also be applicable to the proposed project overlooking the same shoreline feature, thereby, thereby preventing any obstruction within 100 feet of this undeveloped coastal resource. New developer should be on the riverside. I would say that the proposed townhouses are 100 times more invasive than the frag-mighty down there. On Memorial Day weekend, Sunday afternoon, I counted 248 cars and no available parking spaces, and that was for the existing Marina and restaurant uses. The proposal only includes 318 spaces in the site. That is only a 28% increase in parking, yet something like a 400% increase in proposed site use. If approved, the town will need to introduce resident parking stickers, just as Newport has had to do. Traffic considers, uh, considerations are proportionate. I can add that since I submitted my memo, there were 218 cars at 2:00 PM yesterday. This past Friday, not a holiday, there were 232 cars at 1:30 PM. On Sat, on Sunday, June 9, a regular two-day weekend, there were 198 cars at 11:30 AM. That's before lunch even really gets going. The fundamental problem is that the standard town parking permit is one car per four restaurants' seats. That is an antiquated requirement. The proper parking permit should be one car per two seats. The Town of Groton does this a bit differently, integrating three cars for 100 square feet, but that square footage includes back of the house. By back of the house, I mean the kitchen and storage. When calculated for the building code at, um, one seat per 15 square feet, that's what the building code requires, and assuming 25% of the gross area to be back of house, Groton's parking comes in almost exactly at one car per two seats. The neighborhood design, development district allows the commission to acquire this more appropriate and stricter standard in deference to the neighborhood, and it should do so. Proposed staff off-site parking has no sidewalk access to the site, and will create early morning and late night disturbance in our RH10 residential zone immediately across the street from four historic residents, residents on Jackson Avenue. I also add that the application is incomplete, as this master plan includes no topographic information. I also note that there are no renderings of the project as viewed from ground level east of the code. Again, per my memo, I recommend the following. Traffic access to the site only via a two-way cultural street extension with only emergency access from Willow Street. Eliminate all townhouses. Do not add to restaurant use. Cut the high-rise height by a couple stories. Prohibit all off-site parking. Calculate restaurant parking at one car per two seats. Keep the site a predominantly water-dependent use, considering the existing restaurant and a potential modest boutique hotels, as it means the Marina is such accessory to that water-dependent use. In conclusion, I do want this site to be appropriately upgraded, but what is currently proposed is extraordinarily inappropriately scaled. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) 38 Bardell Avenue, 27 Water Street, 20 Rossi Street, 4 Conrad Street, um, 5 Rathbun Place, 15 Home Street. Now, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition that I did not call? They can come up now.
Mary Hendrickson. I live at 20 Rossi Street. Um, I'd like to make some comments, um, that relate to the architects', uh, comments of the June 17 meeting. Um, the comparison of Smiler's Point with Stonington Commons in Stonington Borough was very flawed. The main condo building, uh, Stonington Commons, was reproduced after the fire. The footprint of the building was pre-existing, non-conformity. The association at Stonington Commons does not allow for VBRO or Airbnb, and I doubt whether the same will be true of the condos, apartments, and individual townhouses proposed for Smilers. In response to the land use expert, Smilers is proposing a hardscape and rock shoring of their acreage. They would take out the grasses to increase the water views. This wetland, um, which propose, which they propose to eliminate, is the beginning of the buffer for the natural flood plain, which is between Jackson and Willow, and then it flows towards the parking lot behind St. Patrick's. Haven't we all seen the water overflowing the roads in these areas during our more frequent and big storms? Why would we want to make more flood, make the flooding worse and endanger the historic buildings in this area? My response to the traffic expert, given the nature of this proposed development and the continuing increase of traffic in Mystic, I would imagine the police department would need to be directing traffic in multiple places in town. Um, for example, Willow and Route 1, the Flagpole intersection, Mason's Island, and maybe even Kuchen and Greenville. Our town is a mass frustration for vehicle drivers. I believe the DEP, um, letter was clear as to why this zone change should not be considered, and I won't be, I won't repeat the contents. We might look at the historic Town of Newburyport, Massachusetts, which seeks to protect its character while promoting appropriate growth. It states that the town should prohibit development if there is not adequate public infrastructure to serve the new development. A requirement called concurrency. For a development to be concurrent, the local government must ensure enough infrastructure capacity to serve each proposed development, and must be reviewed to determine if there is both current and reserved capacity in a concurrency review. If there has been a concurrency review, I would say it ignored congestion that we see every weekend in off-season and every day during the tourist season. The result of inadequate infrastructure throughout Mystic will affect the quality of life for residents, make the area less appealing for visitors. In addition, the design of Smiler's Wharf, which does not enhance the abutting National Register District, will also overwhelm the village character and negate the feeling of neighborhood within our town. The Stonington PCC should say no to off-site parking, intolerable traffic congestion, and protect the historic neighborhood and sensitive wetland areas adjacent to the project. Ultimately, will Mystic continue to be a village community that welcomes visitors or a vehicle-for-profit, putting that community at risk of destruction for short-term gain? If the latter, uh, if, if Stonington, um, agrees to the latter, it will lose in the long run. I hope you will consider our community and historic neighborhoods with care, the care we entrusted to you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes. Um, good evening. My name is Dean Anderson, and for the last 41 years, I've lived on Water Street in the borough. But in 19- But in nineteen seventy-four, I lived on Cotrell Street in Mystic, right across from the old lumberyard, and worked at Seaport Marine as a boat carpenter. I'm probably the only person in this room who has both ridden in a boat that was built in that boatyard and worked there too. At the time, I was studying small craft design, and that's why I was there. As a former boat builder, I can tell you that certain sizes of boats can only be accommodated on the waterfront. You don't move sixty-four footers around in a trailer. You better hope they can't figure out a way to do it. Hotels, restaurants, and residences can be located inland and should be. Okay? Architecture aside, building heights beside, you know, boatyards can only be on the waterfront, and I think that's what the DEP, DEEP says in their, their letter to you, which I have read. But statements by the applicant that said that the, they couldn't make a go of it as a boatyard. Well, I'll tell you, in nineteen seventy-four, when I worked there during the America's Cup races, escort boats from Newport were coming down to Mystic to be serviced because all the boatyards in Newport were filled with, you know, America's Cup boats. And they needed somewhere to go to get their engines fixed and their, you know, things repaired. And they'd bring them down to Mystic. It's not that far by water to, you know, short trip. But the business is out there. The boating industry is growing. And you can't just start turning, you know, existing boatyards into chic chic, you know, condos and this sort of thing. Nice, but it just doesn't belong there. Like I say, for the last forty-one years, I've lived in the borough. And that time, I've seen much of the village and its houses turned into weekend homes for the well-off New Yorkers and others. And I think that's about what's going to happen in Mystic if we let this kind of thing go on. We, you know, the, the day-to-day working people that live there now are gonna, they're gonna be pulling up their anchors and leaving. And so much for the village as it now, as it now exists. So that's, that's really about all I've got to say. No, I'm not going to read you all these magazines.
Thank you.
But that's, that's, that's my point. Leave it a boatyard.
Hi, my name is Mary Blanchett. I live at Seventeen Joyce Street, which is on the other side of Mystic, near Mystic.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. I live near Mystic YMCA, Seventeen Joyce Street. Recently, in the past two years, we've had a building that's been put up in our neighborhood. It's a one-building residence. I live on a road that's similar to Jackson Avenue. We've had no less than ten trucks going down our road, eighteen-wheelers, every single day for the past two years. So I, when I think about this project and this neighborhood, I, I like Mystic. I like it that it's a small town. I like it that it kind of closes up shop at 10:00 PM and it gets quiet. I think that's why a lot of people live here. I've lived here for twenty-nine years. I, I love my neighborhood, and again, it's a small street. I also know residents who live over on Jackson Avenue and in that area or who have lived there. And when I think about the impact of this project on their families and their home life and their quality of life, I find it concerning and alarming. And I feel bad for them that this proposal has come up for this area. I, I feel that this project could go somewhere else that it's, that had more property. I know that there was a point where they showed a building that was onsite, like a factory building approximately one hundred years ago, that was a large building. But again, that was approximately one hundred years ago. There was a lot less traffic, a lot less people, a lot less homes, residences in the area. And I, I do feel that this is too much in that area specifically because the roads leading into it are one-lane roads, small roads, and are not equipped for that. Just driving into Stonington High School tonight, I was thinking that here we sit in one building. This building is occupied ten months a year during the day. It's, the other building, the Human Resources Building, now that it was the former police station, is occupied twelve months of the year, but during the day. And then there is a park. And for those two buildings and one park, you have a two-lane road and you have a traffic light. If you look across the street at the, at the current police station in the plaza, leading out there is the same traffic light and a two-lane road. There is no two-lane road that leads into this wharf. That is a major concern. I don't know if the town is prepared to shut down the bridge, keeping the bridge closed indefinitely or maybe once or twice a day opening. I think the bridge opening is one of the major aspects that people come to Mystic to see, especially if they've seen the movie Mystic Pizza. I don't, I don't mind tourists. I don't mind tourism. I don't mind. I, I, I think there are apartment buildings that could be built in our area. I know there is a vacant hotel close to the highway. I, I feel that we're, we're trying to add too much, and the buildings that are displayed are too high. And I don't want Mystic to be a metropolis. I want it to be a nice hometown area where future generations can enjoy growing up. I also have the environmental concerns as well. And for those reasons, I would encourage the commission to deny the zoning change.
Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Wenderoth, and I live at Forty-five Essex Street in West Mystic. And I believe that you must have lost at least one full page of people who wanted to speak in opposition to this because my name was not called.
Well, we haven't, I haven't got, did you sign up the other day?
I signed up the first night, one of the first people.
Oh, yeah, Ellen went with, I called you the other night.
Well, not that I heard.
You're number three on the list.
Not that I heard, and not that any of my friends heard. In any case, I oppose the Smiler's Wharf Zone Change and Project, which was documented by a letter presented to the board by my husband, Charles Wenderoth, on June seventeenth. The developers presenting their proposal to the board at that meeting indicated that very proudly that they were Stonington residents, but not Mystic residents. I say to you, how would you like this project in your front yard or your backyard? You, the planning and zoning board, have not permitted high-rise buildings and Newport-like structures in Stonington Village. Why would you think they should be permitted in the village of Mystic? Tourists come to Mystic because it is a village. If they want an overdeveloped, artificial town, let them go to Newport or somewhere else. The developers are proposing bulkheads of an unspecified height to hold back the land and keep the river water out. As someone else, as many other people said, water has to go somewhere, and it will go around the ends of or over the bulkheads, swirling and eroding the soil and marshland behind it. It will also seek other areas to flood, as it did in Hurricane Sandy not that long ago. If you don't remember, just look at some of the pictures. We're also past due for a hundred-year flood, which has been predicted now for many years. When the traffic specialist gave his presentation, there was no mention of the congestion along Route One when the Baskill Bridge goes up. It's a nightmare today, which many people today have talked about. What will it be like during construction and after completion when all the tourists and residents are trying to access or leave the area? The Seaport Marine area already floods, as many people said. How does the Stone, Town of Stonington plan to evacuate residents and guests from Smiler's Wharf after the developers have made their money and are long gone? The Town of Stonington, the State of Connecticut, and the feds will have to deal with the mess and the problems that the developers created. In addition, since the DEEP has told the town that the project is inappropriate for this flood hazard location because it puts people's lives at risk, it becomes a liability issue for the Town of Stonington. Where will that money come from? Not from the developers for sure. It will have to come to the, from the Town of Stonington coffers or ultimately the Stonington residents when your taxes are raised to cover the legal fees. It's marshland and boatyard for a reason. Downtown Mystic needs preservation and parking, not hotels and high-rises. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Wardle. I live on Fort Conrad Street, which is in West Mystic. My family has lived in Mystic since sixteen thirty-four, so we're long-timers. Everyone else has very eloquently made points that I totally agree with about the development of Mystic. I'm just going to touch on a few of them to make this go faster. One is the proposal presented is more urban waterfront than historic district. And we do have historic districts in Mystic that are meant to preserve the character of Mystic. Developers argue that this is appropriate and hold up the nineteen-ten main block building and powerhouse as a standard to go by. They want us to use these outliers that are not typical. Typical is a two-to-three, four-story historic building that gives Mystic its charm. And these are what should be used as the guidelines for development. Those are, those should be the standard. It's like a typical sales pitch. You put out something here and say you should compare it to this, when really you should be comparing it to something else. This will make Mystic a more vibrant town. Well, there are already forty-six restaurants in Mystic, fifty-seven if you include lunch and breakfast places. Every storefront is occupied. Mystic has popular parades, events, and concerts, and Mystic is already more than vibrant. Another question, someone's already brought this up, but how many of the proposed twenty-five apartments and sixteen townhouses are quickly going to be de facto Airbnbs, further degrading the neighborhood with noise and, noise and traffic? This, this development proposes to change the character of Mystic. It's more for tourists, for more noise, more traffic, and many, many residents like Mystic as it is, maybe even a bit quieter. Okay, just a couple of economic points. Many of the one-hundred-and-fifty-ish equivalent full-time jobs are really just part-time seasonal jobs. The greater Mystic area already has a hard time filling summer jobs as it is. Area restaurants bringing people from abroad to get qualified summer staff. The Ocean House alone requested one-hundred-and-twelve H2B and J1 visas. There clearly is not a shortage of part-time seasonal job openings in our area. If you want your child to have a summer job in Mystic, the jobs are there. Someone made this point more eloquently than this, but looking to the future, maintaining bulkheads and shoreline structure is very expensive. I'm, I'm an engineer. I get this. We always had to look at maintenance costs and future costs as proposals, of proposals. Who's going to pay for that? The town? The state? The taxpayers? Finally, DEEP concerns. DEEP is against this proposals, and there are plenty of other places in Stonington appropriate for residential and hotel development. Stonington does not need to sacrifice rare NC eighty land for this use. It will never get it back. As you know, this is an AE eleven flood zone. An article in New York Times from June nineteenth of this year, and it's on funding to save coastal communities from increasing flooding risks. And it says cities could increase their chances of getting money, that's from the federal government, by reducing their exposure to disasters, perhaps by retrofitting their buildings, implementing aggressive building codes and zoning restrictions, and helping residents leave the most vulnerable neighborhood, vulnerable neighborhoods. The state and federal government want to move people away from flood-prone areas, not build new stuff in them. What would do if you ran this by FEMA? What would they think? And finally, on a more personal note, even though I've lived in Mystic my life, whole life, I did have an apartment in Newport, which is very developed, very touristy for a short while, for about six, well, six years to six months, depending on where it is, off of Bellevue Avenue, to avoid the commute I had to make to Newport every day, so I could stay overnight if I had to. People would ask me if I liked living in Newport, and I would say Newport is a nice place to visit, but Mystic is a nicer place to live. And they got it. I want to keep Mystic a nicer place to live. Don't change the zoning. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Perk Fairchild. I live on Greenville Avenue. This plan undermines the long-term health of Stonington, something I care about a lot because while I haven't lived here for fifty years, I hope to. And I urge you to turn down this proposal and make way for development that conforms with the current zoning. One of the pillars of creating a vibrant, sustainable village, a place I love to live in, is mixed use, diversity of uses. This plan destroys any future for marine-based uses on the site while creating more of what we already have. That's not mixed use. That's not diversity. All of this could be built inland, but we will never get this land back for marine use. A loss of diversity in our econo, in our economy sets us up for an unsustainable economy and financial disaster for Mystic and Stonington in the future. Furthermore, the plan includes a proposal for adding fill to the site. This really disturbs me because increased development and fill, raising the level of the land, will only add to the flooding in the surrounding neighborhood. You don't have to talk about the future storms or what's predicted with climate change. This is a neighborhood that already regularly floods. Increased flooding, increased storm damage will result from this plan. Putting more residents in a floodplain is absolutely reckless. It threatens life and property of residents. Who will be on the hook when the infrastructure washes away? And residents must be rescued from homes built with no exits except through floodwaters. I ask that you turn down this plan. Don't flood our homes with stormwater, with traffic, and with short-term unsustainable development.
Good evening. My name's Quentin Snedeker. I've got a property at Seventy Dennison Avenue here in Mystic. Spent the bulk of my career preserving the maritime culture and assets of this community. Got a background in historic preservation. The boatyards and marinas in this town are really significant historic assets, which is essentially the, it's the essence of why people come here and are interested in this region to begin with. To lose a significant site will diminish that cultural asset base. In my letter here, I cite a couple of articles talking about the things that Christian McGugan and others have raised tonight, that the reality of the maritime industry is really on the rise, is increasing demand, tremendous struggle to meet that demand. One of the articles I bring is the fact that Noank Shipyard, Inc., the applicant, has actually taken over the operation of a shipyard at the other end of the state, a former director yard down in Bridgeport. So again, I'm glad to see that that was a significant part of this evening's discussion. The other thing I'd just like to point out is that essentially the wave of this, future of this country is economic and demographic diversity. And I see nothing in this plan that addresses any of those issues or mitigates the need for affordable housing. So thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for hosting this, and I'm really happy to almost be at the end of the opposition. My name's Karen Clark. I live at thirty-two Borodell Avenue and Mystic, which is the other side of twenty-seven. My husband and I walk into town on a regular basis, and we walk because My husband and I walk into town on a regular basis, and we walk because driving, I mean, driving at this time of year is next to impossible sometimes to get across from one side to the other, depending on time of day. You have to know the schedule also of the bridge. Not everybody knows that. I'm opposed to the proposed development of Smiler's Wharf as it stands, so the proposal as it stands, and while my concerns are many, I'll focus on three of them. And I know these have been discussed tonight, but I want to discuss them one more time in a very quick manner. Congestion. My concern with Willow Jackson, Washington Cotrell, and the other streets around it is that they're already strained. The traffic, the size of the streets are very narrow, and there's really no way to widen those streets. My concern is, if this project goes through, and with all the traffic that's been discussed already, how many traffic lights are going to have to be added to be able to relieve any part of that congestion? Rising water levels. That's already also been discussed, that certain streets in this area already flood during high tides and storms. And even though the proposed buildings are built above level during the storms, the residents really have only one egress, unless you're counting water evacuations and rescues. And we've already seen what that's like in other areas of the country that have been faced with this very same thing. To allow residential development in this area is irresponsible. The flood control measures included in the plan will not be approved by DEEP, and even if they were, putting bulkheads on one side of the river or on one section only forces the water to go somewhere else, like Home Street, or Water Street, or any of the other surrounding areas. My third concern is infrastructure. This proposal is dependent upon the town of Stonington to make changes to the already overburdened sewer system, which has already been discussed. And I'm concerned that to meet the needs of this development, it will cost the taxpayers of Stonington. And as far as I'm concerned, the tax revenue that this proposal has projected for the town is not worth the cost to the taxpayers of Stonington. We are not getting a bang for our buck here. The cost to the residents is also more than money. The traffic impacts our quality of life. The high-rise buildings, five and six stories are high-rise for this town, impact the character of the town, has already been discussed. People come to Mystic because it's a quaint town with a great mix of history, shopping, restaurants, coffee shops, et cetera. What they don't like is to have to stand in lines that last for hours, and they don't like to get into Mystic and not have a place to park. So, again, this has already been discussed as a problem that needs to be solved first. Bringing more development in will not solve that problem. As it stands, this plan does not even meet our own plan of conservation and development. Does this mean that anytime someone wants to develop a property such as this, that the plan of conservation and development gets thrown out the window? I thought that a plan of conservation and development was a blueprint for just that, conservation and development. What's the point of having a plan if it doesn't get referred to when a development is proposed? I urge you to deny, I urge you to deny the proposed zone change from the MC80 to the NDD. Thank you.
I have a, I have a number of statements here which I will, I'll submit. Tom Taylor, Water Street, I have a document that I'll submit, but I have a unique perspective in this project. About a decade ago, I consulted with management for the ownership of the property regarding preliminary plans for a development like this one, and at the time, the conclusion was that the appropriate density, as the gentleman spoke before, was not financially viable, which I think is why we see the proposed density that's been on the table here. And it's my conclusion, based on those discussions at that time, that the inviability of the shipyard is a willful scuttling of that, of that business. And per zoning 8.4.10, financial hardship is not an acceptable premise for a zoning variance or a change in use. There's a little bit more I've said about that, but I think that about covers it. Thank you.
Bill Lyman, 579 Togamak Road. Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to commend you for allowing the opposition to speak as long as they've needed to make all of the important points that they've made. As you know, at the beginning, I was one of the first speakers of the opposition at the last meeting, and at that time, the talks were being limited to two minutes, so I didn't have a chance to finish my thought, and I want to, you indicated there would be time to do that tonight. I'm assuming now is that time. So, I have only a couple of things, and they're really not the points that people have been making, but it's more a focus on sort of the big picture of this whole master plan project. I, like many of the people who spoke in opposition, would really like to see some type of improvement being made to the Seaport Marine property. The question is, what kind of design, what kind of project really would suit the needs of the property, but also not draw the kind of opposition that you've seen here over the past two nights? Clearly, if there's to be a successful project down there, it's one that doesn't draw this kind of opposition. So, the question is, who is the best, you know, what is the best way to design something a little different than what we've heard? I feel that the developer and all those involved in making this proposal have had two nights of listening to a lot of reasons why there is opposition, and if they are truly creative, can come up with perhaps some changes that wouldn't meet this kind of opposition. The other thing I'm aware of is that you, as a commission, have lots of power with this whole master plan process. I would ask you to consider this. If you take the plan as proposed and start putting attachments on it, and start putting codices on it, and start putting modifications on it, then you, as a board, will be designing this project. It's been my experience that a project of this nature, designed by committee, won't turn out well. So, I urge you, as a commission, to resist doing that. I think that you have no alternative, based on what you've heard, to deny the, to deny the master plan as it's been proposed because of the framework it sets up. Encourage the developer to have another look at it and come up with something that would be an improvement that doesn't generate this kind of opposition, but could actually generate support. Thank you very much.
My name is Pam Gibbs. I've been a resident of Noank and Mystic for the past 60 years, and for the last 27 years, I've lived at 14 Jackson Avenue, which overlooks the proposed site of Smiler's Wharf from the east. We bought our property knowing that Seaport Marine was zoned MC80, and I urge you, the commissioners, not to change the zoning to NDD. And I oppose it for many reasons, and as you can imagine, Paul Sardar covered most of them. But I will just give you a couple of ones that I feel very strongly about, and first of all, citing new residential buildings in a flood-prone area is against regulations and is being irresponsible by putting human life in harm's way. We know the DEEP has already warned about this, and that sea level rise is imminent. We all need to understand this is real and take it seriously. Building residential structures so close to the water will not allow the wetlands to naturally migrate and allow it to protect the land as sea level rise occurs. The structures will disrupt the existing wildlife in a cove we overlook. There's purple martens, red-winged blackbirds, hawks, egrets, and herons, as well as red-tailed fox and deer. And quite frankly, I'll be upset if this, if I can't be there to see this. This proposed plan will also obstruct our neighborhood water view. The height and placement of the buildings will dwarf our neighborhood and will not enhance it. And I'd like to note, at the last meeting on June 17th, the fly-through presentation did not show the view from the east, which is our neighborhood, looking west to Smiler's Wharf. That's biased and shows who we're dealing with. As proposed, Smiler's Wharf will bring more people, as we all know, and with it, noise pollution, with an increase in vehicle traffic. We all know the traffic problems, along with the parking issues, have overwhelmed our neighborhood for years, and I have a big beef about coming up with an idea of the overflow parking by putting a parking lot on Jackson Avenue, which will be disruptive and certainly not enhance our neighborhood, and will not be safe. So, commissioners, I urge you to please do the right thing for our town, our neighborhood, and not ignore the Coastal Management Act and Stonington's own plan of conservation and development. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was the first speaker in opposition, and I radically truncated my remarks the other night, so I came back because I've got a few other things I want to get into the record. I've now read the bond application, the economic analysis, the POCD, cover to cover, and the zoning regs, cover to cover. And I actually have about 140 notes from the review of those documents. At about 6:15 tonight, I emailed this package to Keith, so you guys have that for the record. First thing I want to mention is, I'm trained in mathematics. I've spent my entire career in an engineering environment. So, when I read a document full of numbers like the economic analysis, I'm looking out for things that make, you know, should I believe these numbers? Should I not believe these numbers? And my assessment of the economic analysis that was provided to the town is it's, one, really badly written, which is not a reason to reject it or accept it, but it is really badly written. But the numbers, they're all over the map, and without getting into the details, I'm going to give you one example of why you, as a commission, should be very skeptical of any numbers presented by the applicant. Okay? In, they make a statement in one of the tables that the investment value of the commercial side of the property is $29 million. Four million of that is the already existing Red 36. In another table, they say, "The market value of the residential portion is $11 million." So, there is no way that I could figure out from that economic analysis what the total investment value of this project is, because they didn't use consistent units. That's a very fundamental thing to look at when you're looking at a numerical analysis. Are the units consistent? They're not consistent in the economic analysis. Got a couple other things, and I got to put on my reading glasses, I'm sorry.
Is this all in your package you sent to Keith? Because we can read.
Yeah, there's a couple of things I want to highlight, though. And one of them, I think, has already been mentioned briefly, that in 2012, the applicant applied for a mixed-use marine support facility, which became Red 36. Connecticut DBAS for a waterfront walkway at that time, which never materialized. Now, they are proposing a second building as a marine support facility, and the question is, what happened to the first one? Okay, well, it turned into a restaurant, apparently. Okay, the next thing, the applicant at the previous hearing submitted what they said was 200 letters of support. We got the letters from the planning staff. There are actually 185 letters in the package. There's maybe a dozen or so letters that were submitted independently that I don't know if there's overlap between what the applicant gave you and what came in from individuals. But I went through and I looked at, you know, where were the letters from? So, 185 letters.
Bill, we've got all the letters. We've read, we're going to read them, we're going to go through them. We know where they're from. They're not all from Mystic residents. They're from all over the place. And so, we understand that.
Can I continue?
Well, listen, we're running out of time. That's what I'm saying.
You, you have not enforced the time limit rule from the very beginning. So, if you try to enforce.
I have, I have been very lenient tonight, but we only have an hour and a half left.
I want the same treatment that every other person who's spoken has been given. I, I curtailed my remarks on the first night.
Well, I mean, you've said you've given it all to us in paper, so why don't we, we can read it.
Maybe the people here, the people who are here should hear the numbers. So, there's 62 letters from people in the town of Stonington. There's 38 letters from the people from Groton. There's eight from Westerly. There's five from North Stonington. There's 45 from other towns, including Saugus, Massachusetts, of all places. There are 27 letters with no address on them, and there are 59 illegible signatures. So, I know Paul Sardar gave you about 400 signatures on a petition tonight with addresses. You can trace those people. I'm going to go to one thing in the POCD. The POCD is a great document, all right? Whoever did that work did a really good job. On page 30 of the POCD, it says, "Restrict hotels which have the potential to increase exposure of vulnerable populations in coastal flood hazard areas." The PODCD literally says, "Do not put a hotel in a flood zone." So, this board, how, how any reasonable person could find that this proposal conforms to our POCD when it's putting a hotel in a flood zone? Well, I, a reasonable person couldn't reach that conclusion. And there's 100-some other things related to the POCD that get you to the same place. A reasonable person can't reach the conclusion that this proposal conforms with the POCD.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in here that would like to speak general comments on this application? You, you people have signed up, I don't know if they're here. General comment, Ben?
Listener page.
I'm, General, not on the, your general comment, your name's here, I'll call you. I'm not listener page. You're about the last one. You're about the last one. No, I'm saying, talking to Colleen Donarumo on the list.
So Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'd like to make your job a little easier for you tonight. Your staff report, prepared by Keith, has a draft motion to approve the application. I felt what was missing from the staff report was a draft motion of denial, which I think is kind of a no-brainer for you. So I borrowed a little bit of the language from Keith's motion to approve, and I came up with a motion of denial, a resolution of denial, which I'd like to read. Whereas in accordance with the zoning regulations, section 7.21.2, the applicant's proposal is found by the commission to fail to satisfy the statement of purpose of the Neighborhood Development District NDD, specifically 7.21.2.2, harmony with the surrounding residential neighborhoods, promotion of pedestrian safety, provision for adequate parking, et cetera, and 7.21.2.3, furtherance of the goals, standards, and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Area Management Act. Whereas, in accordance with the zoning regulations, 7.21.3.3, the applicant's proposal is found by the commission to fail to meet the eligibility requirements of the NDD, specifically the inability to tie into the public sewer due to a current moratorium on such new hookups. Whereas, in accordance with zoning regulations, section 8.8.2, the applicant is found by the commission to fail to satisfy the impact statement requirements for zoning map amendments, specifically failing to meet 8.8.2.2, due to the current configuration of Cottrell Street and the lack of public support for making it one-way. 8.8.2.3, again, the lack of public sewer capacity at this time. 8.8.2.4.3, due to the lack of compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. Whereas, this proposal has been found by the commission to be inconsistent with the town's Plan of Conservation and Development adopted May 7, 2015, specifically section 7.2, encouraging protection of historic resources, of which Marina facilities certainly are; section 8.3.3, addressing parking issues, which this proposal clearly does not; 9.2.1, promoting development that is in keeping with the character of the overall neighborhood; 10.4.1, which promotes marine services as an economic driver; and 15.1, future land use. Resolved that the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Stonington has reviewed PZ1908-ZC Nyong Shipyard and has determined that this application is not in compliance with the zoning regulations of the Town of Stonington and is therefore denied, adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Stonington, Connecticut, this 8th day of July 2019. Actually, I added the date, make it easy. I printed it on orange paper for you, so that you can find it in your packets when you need it. Couldn't be easier. Thank you very much.
Liz Stern? Is she here? Chuck's needing, he talked, is Chuck here? Fran Hoffman?
Chuck's standing up, I'm right there.
Chuck, oh, you have some, Fran Hoffman, and then Con, I'm going right down the list No, Jim Swearingen? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the commission and staff for quite a few hours of enduring this where you are, I have been. And it's not an easy job, but it's a good one and it's an important one. Couple of points that I wanted to bring up, I promise not to be dramatic, or I'll try and get it done in two minutes.
Thank you.
The Neighborhood Development District puts you in a little different position than you've been in most of the time. Generally, it's very easy for you to tell whether you're acting in your administrative capacity or your legislative capacity. When working with a floating zone, and in particular, the Neighborhood Development District, you are actually acting in your legislative capacity, but you have administrative direction from the NDD, unlike other zone changes. This one specifically spills out rules that you should go by in acting in your legislative capacity. That makes you need to wear, you okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to choke you up.
Go ahead.
So you're acting in your legislative capacity, but with some direction from the NDD. I think the most important direction, without reading the whole regulation to you, is in the statement of purpose. And in watching tonight and listening, actually for two nights now, that the statement of purpose says that you should encourage the reclamation and underutilize of commercial properties. I just want to touch on a little bit of what's been said tonight and how I know that to be different than what I saw and what I've seen up to this point. I didn't hear the applicant say that they had neglected their property or couldn't make a go of being a marina. What I know of the site in the 15 or 20 years I've been involved in one way or another in land use is a property that has been heavily invested upon. I think they doubled the amount of slips that were there, and their new application increases the number of slips. So we're not going to lose a marina. The community's not going to lose a marina, and the applicant isn't going to lose a marina. There's going to be boats on that site. We have a restaurant now and in the MC80, he could have more restaurants, as long as he doesn't go over 100 seats per restaurant. Theoretically, there could be a strip down there with restaurants and commercial property that I think would be a significantly higher traffic pull than what's there. But we're not losing a marina. What we are losing, interestingly enough, I'm a wooden boat guy, and I toured those buildings when I first went on planning and zoning. Jason took me around the community to see some of the areas that needed redevelopment that couldn't be used the way they were used, and I was delighted with one of the buildings that was falling apart. It had a place in it where they steamed 30-foot planks for planking boats. I really don't think that we want to be steaming 30-foot planks on boats on one of the most important properties in our community. They also had bandsaws for cutting wood that were run by leather belts in the building from when they were building wooden boats there, and I don't think that's a practical use of that building anymore. And the structure of the building really lent itself to making old wooden boats and repairing them. So we're not losing a marina, we're keeping a marina, and I think that the statement of purpose is completely fulfilled with the application. The one last thing I want to say is, in addition to reading the words of the law, and that's really what our regulations are, that's the law we have to go by, and the rights that the property owner has, or the rights that you're going to take away from them when you make new laws. The rights that he has, or the rights that he's asking for, are reasonable given this piece of land. You also have to look at this law and say, what was the intent of the people that wrote it a decade ago? I can tell you that the intent with this regulation was to encourage a developer to do exactly what this application is bringing forward. Your job is to look at this and somehow, out of the hundreds of people that have spoke, make a decision that benefits the community and serves your purpose. I'm glad it's you in the seat, not me in the seat, and I appreciate your patience in listening to me. This is a good application.
Hi, Frances Hoffman, 15 Nyag Point Mystic. A little bit about my background, I have a doctorate in social planning and policy, and I've spent my career doing redevelopment of brownfields properties throughout the country, so, and I served on this wonderful commission. Thank you for your service. It's good to see you all again. Mine are general comments, and in that regard, they're basically, they're questions that I feel you must be answering in your own heads, as the presentations have been eloquent and very cogent, and so you have a lot more information with you now than I had when I wrote my comments, but I'm sure you'll factor them in. First of all, these are all, these are nine questions that I think are important for you and for us to be answering. One, is this project in conformance with the Stonington Plan of Conservation and Development? Does this proposal protect and enhance the village of downtown Mystic? Does it encourage village-scale residential development? That's number one. Number two, can our existing infrastructure of roads, sidewalks, fire, police, and wastewater treatments support this project? What additional resources would be required? What would they cost? How will they be paid for? Three, is the method of management of sewage and wastewater generated by this proposed development adequate and acceptable to the town of Stonington? Should developers pay for this as they increase the burden to the town's infrastructure? Number four, what is the likely impact upstream and on low-lying neighborhood properties of the proposed hardscape bulkhead? Is this advised science-based approach to an effective management of coastline shorelines? And number five, how will the quality of life of our critical-valued and fragile historic residential area in downtown Mystic be impacted by this project? Number six, what is the likely impact of the numbers of people expected to use this proposed hotel, the residential units, and additional large restaurant on Mystic and Stonington? Impacts on parking, traffic congestion, and safety? What would the impact, number seven, what would the impact of the proposed height on the appearance of the Mystic River and the harbor? Does it contribute positively to the attractiveness of this pivotal location at the mouth of the river and enhance entrance to the harbor and to Mystic? Will the village-scale charm and shoreline beauty of our town and the village of Mystic, which is so appreciated by those of us that live in the area and which also serve as the base for tourism, be ended or be eroded, I'm sorry, by the scale of the proposed project? Number eight, can this commission justify ignoring the strong statement by the Connecticut DEEP opposing the project? And last of all, this is a question, I think it affects us publicly in our pocketbook. They're bond questions, so the bonds are real money, they mean real commitment, and they have real public expenditure and consequences. What are the specific terms of the $10 million bond reported by the news media that would help finance the project? What are the benefits and the risks and the liabilities to the various parties, including the public? Is it possible to have state bonds committed before a project has been approved through the public-town decision-making process? And then my last part of this bond question, will the other reported $10 million bond that was designated for general infrastructure improvements town-wide still be available to the town, or will it not be available if the $10 million bond is designated for the proposed project? Are we in a trade-off situation, and what are the trade-offs? Those questions have not been asked before, but I think have real importance to this discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam Gibb?
She already spoke.
She did, okay. Eric Currie, has he spoken? Oh, John Swearingen, is he here? Nick Solano, 26 Dennison Avenue? Sorry.
For the record, my name is Colleen Donarumo. I live at 220 Good Avenue in Polka Tuck. You've heard a lot of testimony in these deliberations, not only from the neighborhood, which will ultimately be affected if approved as presented, but also from people throughout the whole town of Stonington. It appears not only is there great opposition to the proposal itself, but more importantly, I view the opposition as an indictment against the NDD regulations themselves. Regulations that have no bounds, no height limitations, no setbacks, no floor area ratio, no maximum lot coverage requirements. In other words, you can do whatever you want, even without providing adequate on-site parking. As a commission member, you took an oath of office to quote faithfully discharge according to the law your duties as a member of the Town of Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission. The question now becomes, do you sell your soul and risk your integrity as a commission member by disregarding state and local regulations? You know, sometimes it takes three tries in this town to get an application that is acceptable to the whole town. Someone who spoke in favor said, give them a chance. Yes, give them a chance to come back with an application that everyone can live with, not just the immediate neighborhood, but the community as a whole. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in general comments? I'm gonna take a five-minute break, I'm gonna go. Call the meeting back to order. It's Mr. Sweeney's turn with the rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, did you ask me to proceed with the rebuttal, or are you looking to open up the floor for questions from the commission? We're happy to proceed.
We're gonna have questions from the commission. Would you like to do this, or would you like to do your rebuttal and then we'll have our questions?
I think, I think a lot of my rebuttal might be answered in your questions, so I think typically the rebuttal is the last thing that I do.
All right, so we'll go ahead at this time with the commission's questions.
There's a staff comments section, too.
Oh, the staff? Want to do staff then commission?
Sure.
We'll do the staff and then the commission.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief here, but the department prepared a report on the application of the commission. It uses the framework spelled out for large projects and the zoning regulations. The regulations call for a report that focuses on feasibility. It's what the regulations asked for. Basically, is it buildable or realistic? You know, the report goes through, it's basically... You know, the report goes through, it's basically feasible in most areas, assuming Cotrell is one-way and sewer issues are resolved as they're expected to be. However, the report's clear that, in its emphasis on feasibility, it's not a substitute for the important value judgments that the commission has to make in a number of areas. The report doesn't recommend approval or denial of the application, and we're not going to approve, we're not going to recommend approval or denial now, because to do so wouldn't be appropriate considering the significant policy decision and balances of different factors that you have to make as the commission. You know, we try not to take that role away from you here. As has been mentioned a lot, the NDD is a floating zone governed by a master plan, developed by the property owner. As lots of people have said, you are using your legislative authority in deciding whether to change the zone. It's your highest level of authority here. Most other types of applications have to be approved if they meet the regulations. In this case, they're looking to amend the zoning map, so you have a lot more discretion to say yes or no. If the master plan's approved, they'll have to return with one or more detailed site plan applications, which will involve public hearings. These will include engineering details on grading, drainage, proposed bulkhead. Despite the required public hearing, the commission will be operating under their administrative authority at that point, where if it conforms to the already-approved master plan and addresses under other standards like drainage, it'll basically have to be approved. Therefore, use your greater authority in discretion now in reviewing the master plan. The master plan sets the parameters of the development, the things like uses, building placement, height, traffic parking issues. So if the changes you want to see, now's the time to address them rather than in the site plan process. As far as the decisions and findings, ultimately, the commission has to vote to approve/deny the application or approve with modifications, but that decision's informed by a lot of individual findings. Our report, yeah, does include a draft resolution to approve in case you decide to approve. That language basically says the right things if you, with defensible reasons, if the approvals If you're leaning towards denying the application as you start discussing this, we recommend giving us time to spell out the denial reasons in a resolution. We don't do that ahead of time because we don't know the specific reasons that you would choose to deny something. As far as the specific individual things you're deciding, one of the main ones, it was talked a lot, was consistency with the POCD. Per state statutes, when deciding on a zone change, you have to consider whether it's consistent with the POCD, and the NDD regulations also require that of you. So a project like this touches on dozens of recommended policies in the POCD. The report lists them all and doesn't weigh them relative to each other. So I'm not going to go through all of those. One of the main things in the POCD is the Future Land Use Plan in there, which is intended to guide the zoning regulation and map changes and other decisions. The Future Land Use Plan recommends marine commercial at this location, which is defined in the plan as areas mainly devoted to water-dependent uses such as marinas and land and related uses. The proposal's to obviously rezone away from marine commercial, zone to NDD. MCD does allow for non-water-dependent uses, it doesn't just allow for marinas. So the commission has to determine if the proposal basically leaves enough marine commercial in the NDD master plan to be consistent with that recommendation, and whether the addition of other uses conflicts with that part of the plan. POCD has potentially negative and potentially positive policies in there. As far as the negative ones, discouraging new development in floodplain areas, recommendation to restrict certain facilities like hotels in floodhazard areas, protection of tidal wetlands could be something you look at, appropriate setbacks from coastal jurisdiction lines, promotion of water development uses. There's potential positive ones in there, providing coastal public access, providing a mix of uses in a village area, focusing new development in underutilized village areas and several economic development goals. The town adopted its Coastal Resilience Plan as part of the POCD as an appendix to that, and that plan analyzes the town's risk from coastal storm surge and sea level rise. Downtown Mystic's the most vulnerable area in town, really. The plan really focuses on more conceptual, large and small mitigation measures that were developed to increase resilience. The plan's focus wasn't really to judge specific development applications. The plan does recommend a coastal flood barrier in the area of the proposed bulkhead. At this point, it's unknown how much of the area, how much of the surrounding area will be protected by the bulkhead. That's more of a detail for the site plan application when those details are at hand. This plan also recommends public-private partnerships, cost-sharing approaches, pursuit of grants for those measures. As a whole, the proposal both increases risk by placing new residents, hotel guests, and structures near the coast, and it increases resiliency by adding the new bulkhead along the coast. So it's one of those balancing acts in decisions that the commission has to make here. Another decision is the Comprehensive Plan. State statutes require the commission's decision to conform to what the law calls the Comprehensive Plan, and that plan, it's not a specific document like the POCD. It's, according to state statutes, a combination of the zoning regulations and the zoning map. It's basically the town's vision for its development as spelled out in those. It's basically a check against extreme spot zoning, and the major question there seems to be whether the addition of the new uses instead of boat storage and repair makes that still consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The NDD regulations themselves include a lot of decisions in a statement of purpose, rules, and waivers. While the NDD, it's not a conventional zone full of strict heights and setbacks, the language of the zone does include specific factors for the commission to consider. The main ones, the statement of purpose, which is important, and I will read that here. The statement of purpose for the NDD in Section 7.21.2 is, "The NDD is intended to encourage the reclamation of underused commercial," if I can read it correctly, "commercial parcels and permit new construction, renovation, and/or adaptive reuse at these sites, promote diversified housing opportunities, including but not limited to mixed-use development uses, and preserve and enhance the town's historic character, sensitive environmental resources in these neighborhoods and the village cores. The zone is intended to allow for the establishment, continuation, and expansion of such uses and activities in ways that will maintain and enhance compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods. Factors to be considered by the commission in approving the NDD include: proposed uses in layout and conformity with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives contained in the POCD, harmony and compatibility with surrounding residential neighborhoods, land uses in the village cores, including adequate buffers that are consistent with the existing condition on the site, neighborhood and/or village core, promotion of pedestrian safety, provision for adequate parking, minimize impact of motor vehicles, and prevention of glare to adjacent properties from lighting onsite. To the extent practical, commercial traffic shall be directed to major thoroughfares and away from residential streets, and also furtherance of the goals, standards, and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Area Management Act." The NDD also has language about performance buffers and other guidance, which says the commission will carefully analyze any buffers between the NDD and surrounding residential neighborhoods, and may tailor buffers to include greater setbacks landscaping fences, walls, and berms, considering the relative heights of the uses on each side of the buffer. Now, this proposal requires two specific waivers of the NDD regulations. Despite being in the NDD, the site is still subject to the coastal design height of only 24 feet from the base flood elevation, because it's 150 feet from the coast. So it's really only approvable if the commission grants the waiver as allowed in Section 7.35 of the regulations. So the regulations set that rule, but allow you to waive it, basically. The NDD also requires a 50-foot non-infringement area from tidal marsh and coastal waters, except for boating facilities. So the application's only approvable if you deem those waivers worthy here. The other thing for the commission to decide is the conformance with the Coastal Management Act. Consistency with this act, it's specifically called out in state statutes and in the NDD regulations. The act includes several policy goals geared towards protection of the coastal resources, enhancement of coastal public access, and preservation of water-dependent uses along the coast. So just to go over them, per state statutes, the commission has to consider the following factors for amendments to the zoning map or regs. Character and distribution of the coastal resources within its coastal boundary, capacity and limitations on such resources to support development, types of methods and development compatible with wise use, protection, and enhancement of such resources, the nature and pattern of existing development, and the need for public services. As previously read into the record, DEP recommends denial on the following grounds: diminishment of a water-dependent use on a waterfront site, increasing risk to life and property by siding new residences in a FEMA flood zone, risk to tidal wetlands, conflicts of POCD, public access not commensurate with the loss of an existing boatyard, the future flood and erosion control walls won't be permitted for residential non-water-dependent Ultimately, the statutes do establish the commission as the judge of whether the application meets this act as well as the POCD. DEP has given their opinion, but it is a local and not a state permit. If it is approved, DEP does have the right to appeal the decision. Some factors not in the DEP letter is, public access is defined as a water-dependent use. The act doesn't really get into how much specific activities a marina has to engage in. Some key questions for this specific decision is, does the replacement of certain marina structures like boat repair and storage with additional coastal public access amount to an inappropriate diminishment of water-dependent use? Does the addition of other non-water-dependent uses like the hotel, residential, and restaurant amount to an adverse impact on the marina or on future water-dependent development opportunities? Do these changes still conform to the POCD's recommendation for marine commercial uses at this location and other POCD goals to maintain water-dependent uses? Should the commission allow a zone change that would enable substantial new residential development in a floodhazard area within the CAM boundary? Does the proximity of the development to tidal wetlands present an unacceptable risk to coastal resources? And other modifications to the master plan that can address potential issues with the act? Just other very general considerations? Do you have enough information on whether the property should be rezoned? If not, get it now at the master plan stage while the hearing is still open. And are there modifications to the plan that you think would enhance its design or better protect neighboring property owners from any negative impact? As far as other specific things to clarify with some things with traffic, just a reminder that the traffic study is based on converting Cotrell Street to one-way south. You know, approving this plan wouldn't necessarily make that happen, it would still be up to the police commission, selectmen, board of finance, whether to modify the road layout and fund associated changes with that. So if it's approved, you know, be recommended to have some sort of stipulation linking site plan approval or construction to making Cotrell Street one-way. Traffic's one of the big impacts here, the weight of the project's traffic impact is a relative one for the commission. You know, level of service and traffic studies, they're a guide to anticipating the impacts of congestion, how much additional traffic is too much for the community is, you know, it's one of the many hard questions for the commission here. And parking is sort of a similar issue. You know, parking, the numbers were, if you go by adding up all the numbers conventionally required by zoning, they'd need 387 spaces with 318 provided onsite. That's an 18% reduction. When you add in their off-site spaces proposed within 500 feet, they get to 372. If you count the Packer Building ones, that's 428. So it's, you know, the commission's approved shared parking in village areas before, but it's sort of a, you know, one of these areas for the commission to decide how much is appropriate in this case. As far as building heights, one note is that since grading plans haven't been submitted, it's possible that the buildings could be constructed at raised elevations, making them higher than if they're constructed at current grades, so it's something to keep in mind with the building heights. So it helps with flood safety, but makes them taller relative to their surroundings. We requested clarification about the accuracy of the relative heights and 3D renderings. The response was that they're accurate with apparent discrepancies due to the existing grades. That might be something to, you know, for them to talk about during the rebuttal here. Architectural Design Review Board reviewed this on a preliminary basis, generally had positive comments. They recommended that the commission hire an urban design consultant to help provide input at this stage of the process. Efforts to find someone weren't really productive at this point. So if this, if the commission did, was gearing towards approving this, we'll come up with recommended stipulations that will arise out of your deliberations. As far as the timeframe, the maximum that this hearing can go is August 15th, and that's with a maximum extension granted by the applicant, which we don't know if they'll grant that far. So, August 15th, that's the maximum it could go with extensions from the applicant, which we don't... August. Yeah, that's only the maximum the hearing could go with their permission, because according to state law, we need their permission to have the hearing. Yeah, right? Well, we already, we're already at the point where they've given us an extension to get this far. So even to extend one more day with the hearing, we'd need their permission to do that. Otherwise, we'd have to close the hearing tonight. You wouldn't have to decide tonight, you'd still have 65 days to decide, but even if we want to continue the hearing just to next week, we'd need their permission to do so per state law. And finally, Connecticut general statutes state that property owners who are adjacent to a zone change can force a supermajority vote by submitting a protest petition. So if the owners of 20% of the area of the lots within 500 feet of the zone change submit a petition, four out of five votes will be needed to approve this application. Protest has been submitted today, so we can't determine tonight whether it meets the statute. We'll have to analyze that with the help of the town attorney and our GIS consultant, because there are a lot of gray areas and what you count and what you don't count, and you know, we'll have to measure that exactly, but we'll let you know the results of that when you decide one way or the other.
Keith, a procedural question. If, if we can't close this hearing tonight, well, I guess you're saying we have to close this hearing tonight unless we get approval to extend, unless we get an extension from the applicant? So without that extension, then we're put in a position where, don't we have to deny this application because we don't have grounds to conclude that we could approve it? We just don't have time to get there.
Well, once you close the hearing, you'd still have 65 days to debate it and consider it, but at that point, the applicant's shut out from the discussion. So, I mean, if that's, that might be the conclusion you come to. You know, if... You know, if you feel that you need more information that you didn't get, that might be the conclusion you come to.
Other, I mean, the board is being shut out of the discussion if we have to close the hearing.
What is the difference between a denial and--
Microphone, please.
You may have to turn it on.
What is the difference between a denial and not approve? I mean, we're being asked to either approve or not approve. Where I didn't understand where, that there's, isn't there a difference between not approve, I'm voting not to approve and to deny?
No, I'm seeing them as the same thing. You know, you'd vote to approve or deny. I mean, maybe it's just two different ways of saying the same thing, to not approve it or to deny it.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard on this issue?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the applicant, again, Bill Sweeney, legal counsel. It's, by my watch, it's 10:51, and it would be a shame if the commission did not have adequate time to ask my client pertinent questions related to the application. My client is willing to provide a short extension of time to continue this hearing to your July 16th meeting. I understand this room may be available. I understand that the public participation portion of the hearing is over, but it would be unfair, I think, to force you to try to make a decision on this application without even having a chance to ask us questions you may have, particularly because I asked you not to ask questions during our presentation to keep the ball rolling, and I asked you to write those questions down and so we could come back to them and talk about it. It's also almost 11 o'clock, and my, my brain doesn't work that well after 11, and I'm sure a lot of other peoples don't either. So I'd be willing to extend again to July 16th as long as we can focus on questions.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order?
Who's calling? Yeah.
The, the citizens have not had an opportunity to ask questions of the commission. I understand the commission can ask questions of the applicant, but the citizens also have an opportunity to ask questions of the commission, and if we--
No, the citizens have had their turn.
They talked, yes. They spoke, but they, they got no answers.
No, but we, we heard you.
All right.
All right.
I certainly will do my best to answer those questions--
The rebuttal will answer the questions. The applicant will answer your commission's question, the public's questions if we can't answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If we can have it, the 15th?
16th.
Which day is that?
Tuesday, July 16th.
A week from today, tomorrow.
7:00 PM at this location.
All right. Is ever agreeable?
Here.
Fine. All right.
Again, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, the purpose of that hearing is to allow us to interact with the commission and for me to provide a rebuttal.
Yeah, I understand that. That's what we're waiting for.
Right, and the extension will be given to that date. Thank you.
We want to have it here because I want to have the public, room for the public. We can't go, go to middle school, and there's no air conditioning there either, so.
We, I want, we want to be really clear here. So we are not closing the public hearing tonight.
No, no. We can continue to next, it's Tuesday, 15th.
16th.
16th?
Tuesday, the 16th.
It's 1/6?
Yes.
I don't know if we're hearing you.
Tuesday, July 16th, 7:00 PM at this location.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
If we can have a motion to continue the public hearing.
The next meeting after the rebuttal, there's a new information presented by the public and the commission.
The question is about new information presented by the applicant. Will the public have a chance to, to ask questions of new information? Mr. Chairman, we do not intend to submit any new information.
Any new information, okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to continue the hearing to the 16th at 7:00?
Not everybody's going to be here, so do you want to give the people who are unable to attend a chance to ask their questions tonight?
No.
Meaning, on the committee?
I can't, I can't hear you.
For the next 10 minutes?
Commissioners or what?
Commissioners, yeah.
No, we can just do it next week, next Tuesday. You can't make it? Well, can everyone else make it? Can you all make it next week? Do we have enough? Write down your questions and give them to the legislators. Okay. We have a motion, a flaw to continue the hearing?
Well, should we continue?
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Did, did you motion to adjourn?